Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Wednesday, February 19. I know it's February School Vacation Week here in Massachusetts, so maybe some of you are off having fun, as is one of our board members. So we are a quorum of four, and all women. No joke, all women. Anyway, we are gonna, we have a couple of meetings and appointments that we're gonna be doing today. We have the Board of Health gonna be joining us. We have members of the Planning Board that's gonna be joining us. But before we jump into any of that, I'd like to open it up for citizens' participation. If there's anyone here in the meeting room that would like to do anything, if not, raise your hand.
I just wanna...
Can you come to the podium, please, so they can hear you?
Oh.
Oh.
Hi.
So you have to introduce yourself and where you live.
I'm Jay Burns, and I just want to, from the Board of Health, I wanna let everyone know that we are accepting nominations for the Mary Mortenson Public Health Award for Outstanding Public Health Service. So just, that's been in Mike's newsletter and elsewhere, so.
Great. So Jay, remind us when those nominations are due?
Is there a due date? March 1st.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and if there's anyone, oh, Mark, I see your hand raised, so you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Mark DeSoney, 119 Main Street. To, through the chair, chairperson, chairwoman, I'd like to ask Assistant Jim Ball, that at the ZBA meeting, oh, actually, the, 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 I was in the town hall, and I made copies of my question, of my questions to the ZBA that one night. And Pete Manchek made copies and gave, gave her one. I asked if she can give one to the, for her and to, and to our town manager. I just go and ask her if she did.
Hey, Mark, yes, I did.
And was it read and talked about between the both of you?
You know, we didn't have a chance to talk about it. You know, we did have a chance to kinda relay some of those concerns with, that you had expressed, Mark, with Pete, you know, in advance of the ZBA meeting.
Okay, I was just, I was wondering, they got two of me up there. Oh my God. I was wondering, huh, we have, but everyone's trick or treat. Now, I just wanted to know what you thought of, of those. And I tried to speak that meeting, and they got me pinpointed only on traffic, so I couldn't say everything.
Yeah, and, and Mark, I think, you know, in your, in your comments, you did have something about traffic, and then, you know, something more about the zoning and stuff. I think, I think we should probably touch base on the zoning, because I think, I think you had essentially duplicated something, so, that, that already exists, so. Wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
Do you, do you want me to come into the office?
Yeah, Mark, you know, it's been a while since we've chatted, so we can do that.
Do you want to say a certain time, day, or whatever?
Um, why don't you reach out tomorrow, and we'll set up a time. How's that?
Through email or phone call?
Through Diane Mortenson.
To Diane, so that's gotta be email?
Yeah, be fine. Diane runs my life, pretty much. Diane and Susan, actually.
Yeah, no, now, speaking of Susan, she's on the phone, but I didn't know Beth Reynolds was working in the Selects Office. You see her name in the lower left corner.
Yeah.
I know you got a long meeting, so that, that's all there is.
Okay, great, well, thank you, Mark, appreciate it. Okay, it is just a few minutes before 7:15, so I'm gonna invite this, the Board of Health, if you look at that clock, we're at 17:00. If you guys wanna come up here, and we have, um, maybe share some of these microphones, and then you guys can...
Ooh, y'all like coming at the same time, it's like synchronized almost.
Then if you pull that one in the middle, you guys can, if you're okay sharing. There we go, wonderful, good. So, I still don't see our candidates online. So, let's see. I'm gonna do this while we wait for our candidates to show up. If I could get a motion to accept the Consent Agenda as presented, with a thank you to Matt Marsh, Matt Marshquest for his time on sustainability.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the Consent Agenda passes 4-0. Okay, well, we can at least start the discussion, so if you guys wanna call the Board of Health to order?
Good evening, so I'd like to call the February 19th meeting of the Board of Health to order.
Okay. One is back there taking notes, so you're good.
Perfect. So, we have, we've received two Talent Bank forms, one from Maurice Krasner and one from Nancy Lynch. So we, we've all met Maurice in the past. Maurice did run for a seat at the last election. He's a pharmacist. We have not met Nancy in the past that I know of.
Okay.
No, I thought that they'd be here.
Is that microphone on? Yeah, just make sure it's green, there you go.
Just wondering if we can confirm that we communicated with them.
Yeah, Nate, uh...
We did, okay.
Susan said that she did communicate and that they were gonna be here.
Okay.
Okay. Oh. Okay, okay, so, it'll be a little bit quicker discussion, but...
We really need Maurice here, so.
Yeah, so if Nancy has withdrawn, well, if he's on his way, I would hate for him to, you know, show up and then not.
You, you made it.
Okay, so that's gonna be quicker than we thought. Yeah, this is always interesting. Could be, could be that things are gonna go quicker than we thought, so. Well, while we...
Would you like to share with us some of the things that, that people who are, have received the Mary Mortenson Award have, have done in town, that, or the types of things that you look for, or?
I would need help with that. I know that my good friend Ed Hart had received the award for his work. It was on some of his environmental efforts around insecticides. I received it last year for the Remote Area Medical Clinic. Ed, you have received...
I received it.
Yes.
What was that for again, Ed?
It's all Mike Herbert's fault. No, so, we, we, we took COVID head-on. And we were basically the showpiece for almost the entire state. People were watching what we were doing. We were able to assist other towns. We joined a collaborative. When the vaccine came out, in, in a six-week period, we were able to vaccinate 16,000 people with the collaborative. It was pretty impressive.
Pretty amazing.
Yeah, that can't be overstated, really, what you did almost single-handedly, Ed, in terms of organizing everything. I know that, at the time, having been working in the schools, I know how often we sent teachers over to have them, you know, tested, and, and how many times it kept a teacher in the school, and sometimes not, but, but it certainly was huge, you know, for the schools and the kids, and I appreciated that.
There were many a morning where I would get the results from the test from the night before, 'cause I would be in my office at 5:00 AM, and I would be chasing a school bus to get a kid off of the bus that had tested. And Claudia and I were in a, Claudia, I, I'm going after this bus.
So other, my, my question was gonna be, what is the Board of Health working on right now? What are the issues that you're dealing with, so that as, you know, as a new member steps on, what are the kinds of things they're gonna have to step into?
So we, right now, we're seeing a lot of septic variance approvals we're doing. We're working with some hoarding situations. We're working with some trash issues at some of our apartment complexes that we're working with. Some restaurant issues, as we get the inspection reports from restaurants, things like that. Feel free to try to...
Yeah, and some of those things have been lingering for, for quite a while, so ongoing issues with the same sites. So that's what the next member will, I think, learn pretty quickly. When I started a few years ago, it was a lot of septic variances. It's not the most exciting stuff, I think.
How much of town is on septic still? Any idea? Wow, still that much?
And we get the variances when someone's system's failing.
Right.
And so we'll hear from the contractor, and they'll show us their plans and explain what they're gonna do.
Would you ever consider putting out some kind of material regarding the science behind vaccines?
Sure.
Thinking that it might be a bad thing these days. I think our Health and Human Services Secretary has already said that he's going to do actually the opposite of what he said he was gonna do during the hearings to appoint him.
I guess that's actually a question for you guys and for you as well. One of the things we started talking about, and is how we are gonna be hit potentially by federal funding, right? What, what's gonna impact, what might not come through, what might we have to change, and look at, at the local level, and then what's coming down from the state level. I would think as Board of Health, you also have grants and funding for things that are coming from the federal level through, you know, from federal to state to you, to, to Board of Health. Any thoughts on how that's gonna impact you, or what you do, or?
So we get our vaccines through the state.
Okay.
You know, we get all of our childhood vaccines and flu vaccine.
Right.
I'm, I'm curi, that, again, I, it's a little on the unknown right now, how that, how it's gonna affect DPH, and what, what's gonna happen with their funding, and how we're gonna be able to continue to get those vaccines. Because, you know, this is how we get kids into schools, you know, you know, and that's why we've had such success with our childhood vaccine program. We're able to get kids in school instead of them sitting at home.
Right.
And I, I just can, just add to Mr. Chief Humberman, right? So the vaccines we are getting, they are through federal grants, you know, so we are worried. In the past three and a half years, we have administered close to 5,000 vaccines in Ashland, right?
Right.
Especially to, to our school-going children, right? So that can get very well affected, because they are through a federal grant that comes to DPH, and they come, come to us all free, you know? So we, we get it free, we administer it free, you know, so, and those, those vaccines are pretty costly, you know? Some of them, of one single, single shot is like $200, $250, you know, so...
Wow.
That we are definitely worried about that childhood vaccine program, that we are supporting at least eight, nine towns that are in collaborative, that are in shared services, so we, we give it to all of those towns too, you know?
Right.
So that, that's definitely a concern. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And I know it's a discussion we've had, but also in regional, and, you know, and you work with regional stuff all the time, that how can we work together, not only within our town, but within our region, to make sure that what we're seeing negative coming down from the federal, from the federal level, how can we make sure our towns are staying positive and supporting our residents, not only within Ashland, but within our region? So I don't know how closely you work with other boards of health, but certainly whatever we can do to help support and work together to work across the region, I think is gonna be so important moving forward.
Absolutely.
Just as a thought, just to kind of best use of time, do you wanna talk about the budget, and then I think, you know, with the Board of Health here?
Sure.
They can kinda hear.
Yeah, let's, yeah, so we can jump down to Town Manager now. Is this the 20...
No, this is the 26...
The 26 budget? Okay, sure.
Just re, the Budget Workshop that Raj, you know...
Yeah, let's, let's jump down to that.
So, no, I, I think, so we had the opportunity this past Friday for department heads, including Raj, to, to come and, and basically discuss their budget requests and what they needed, and why, you know, why they felt it was appropriate, what the, what the need was within the community. And so we were fortunate, we had several members of the Select Board and the Finance Committee were there and ask questions, and I think, you know, here's Aaron. I think, so just in general, for everybody, for all of you to know, in case, you know, you're not aware of this, I mean, we have a pretty significant budget deficit that's going to need, oh, here's Maurice, that, you know, we, we need to make a decision, I think collectively. We'll be having a meeting in March to discuss this. Are we going to use like one-time funds to fix this budget deficit? Or are we gonna move more in the direction of making cuts? So I know what I'm probably gonna recommend, you know, doesn't necessarily mean that that's what's gonna happen, but, you know, we're in a pretty precarious financial position. It shouldn't be a surprise to anybody, you know, I've talked about this for years now, especially, you know, as we, you know, move towards this process of like acquiring open space and, you know, making those expenditure, I'm not saying that that's the only reason. Please don't take it that way, but like when, when you buy open space, like not only are you expending money to acquire that property, so you have a, you know, a cost on, on that side of the ledger, you're also taking that property off the tax rolls from it being able to be developed, and the additional tax revenue that would be generated through that as well. So it's kinda like a double, double-hit financially. Again, I don't want people to walk away thinking that that is the reason why we have a budget deficit that we have. It does contribute, though.
Yeah.
And one of the things we talked about was like the new growth numbers, which, you know, measure basically how much new development happens in town, and just the, the financial impact that that has. So that's kinda where we are in general. I think, you know, the board members had an opportunity to ask, you know, questions of specific budgets. I think it was more geared towards specific budgets as opposed to things as a whole, but, yeah. I thought it was very, hopefully you found it beneficial.
I'd like to ask questions, but I, I wanna be respectful, so Maurice is here now. Hi Maurice, how are you? Good, we're gonna invite you up to the table. Usually we make you go to the podium, but since we're all sitting here, we can have a nice conversation. And I will let you know that there was someone else who was also vying for the seat, and they have decided to not run for the seat, so this should be a very easy conversation for you.
No pressure now, it's all on.
Considering you've done a lot of work to get here, so, so we have the Select Board and the Board of Health. I think you might know, maybe let's do some real quick introductions. We'll start there with Board of Health.
David Kinsman, I've been on the board about...
Two years?
Yep.
Yes, two years.
Barbara Sekesagundu, I've been on the board for five years, I think.
Four, four or five, yeah, yeah.
Hi Maurice, I'm Jay Burns, and I've been on the board for going into my fourth year. Running again in May.
Hi, I'm Ed Humberman. I don't know how long I've been on the board. Been a while. It's been a while.
Keep going around.
Oh, sure. Hi Maurice, I'm Makita Keegan, Select Board, actually coming up on a year in May, actually.
I'm trying to believe it's February already, at the end of February.
Maurice, Claudia Bennett, your former principal, or, maybe I might, I may have only been your assistant principal. Yeah, but, welcome.
Randy Kinsman, Select Board. I've been on the board six years now, almost six years. Almost six years, yeah, yeah. And Yolanda Greaves, I know your family, I know your parents. And I am in, finishing up my 13th year here on the Select Board. And then Joe Mignani, who is our fifth member, is off on vacation, and he's finishing up his 15th year, yeah. He, he went to Florida. Hopefully it was warm. I've been, I was, I was chatting with some people who live in Florida now, and they were like, oh yeah, it's gonna be chilly, it's gonna be in the 50s. And I said, okay, it was 13, and they're like, it's all relative. I said, okay, I get that, but still. Anyway, Maurice, just give us a quick overview for the, and this is more for the people who are watching. We've all had the opportunity to read your resume, and many of us chatted with you a year ago when you ran, and also we got to know you when you ran for the seat. So just for the people that are watching, give us a quick background of yourself and why you'd like to have this seat.
So, my name's Maurice.
Just pull the microphone a hair closer, there you go.
So my name's Maurice Krasner. I'm a 25-year resident of Ashland. I was raised here by my parents, went to school here, moved away for school for a while, came back with my wife. We bought a house here the last couple of years. I'm a pharmacist. I work locally in Milford, a retail pharmacy. I was really looking for an opportunity to get involved with the town, kind of give back to the community that afforded me a lot of opportunities so far. And I figure, I saw that the, last year, that there was a spot open on the Board of Health, and I figured that with my background, my education, I, I might be a good fit to maybe help out in that way. So I reached out, and here we are now.
Well, that's why they say keep trying. If at first you don't succeed, try, try again. Does anybody have any questions for Maurice?
But I'll just make, I have no questions, Maurice. I just, I appreciate you coming back, your persistence, and I think it'd be great to have some of your background. I'm, I'm a pharmacologist, so. Good to have a fellow pharma person, so, thank you.
In, in a legal way, in a legal way.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll be, we'll be making our own vaccines.
Right.
There we go. If we can't buy them here.
The way things are going.
Oh, there you go. There you go, there you go. I guess my one question is, have you pulled papers, or are you planning on pulling, pulling papers for the election this May, if, if we appoint you?
I have not yet, but I will plan to.
Okay, that's, for me, that's something, if we're, if you get appointed, it makes sense to, you know, if you're willing to, to then pull papers, and I think I, myself, would be more than happy to support that, so. Okay, so, any other questions, concerns? Okay, do you guys wanna make the motion, and?
Oh, I just wanted to say that it's just fantastic to see it, see someone like just raised here and coming back here to raise their family and to contribute to the community. I think this is just the best-case scenario all around. It's just wonderful to see. I just wanted to, I just wanted to say that, Maurice, that's all.
So my wife and I met at Ashland High School, and...
Oh, did you know that?
That's awesome.
Yeah, we stayed together through, we went to separate colleges, but, yeah, once I finally finished school, we just thought this, this was the best place for us. We, we both loved Ashland, our families are here, so, just makes sense.
You got married, it was like last April, right?
In May, yeah.
Last May, right before the election.
Just a little bit of stress all at once, but, well, that's great, okay.
So I would like to make a motion that we appoint Maurice Krasner to the Board of Health to fill our vacant seat.
I'll second it.
Okay, yep. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
That passes 8-0. You are officially appointed to the Board of Health. Make sure you go down to the town clerk's office before their next meeting, so you can get sworn in. And at the same time, if you want, you can pull your papers and make it really official.
Thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you so much, like I, as, as, you know, John said, that, you know, thank you for coming back, and thank you for being diligent, and I, I too love the fact that you were born and raised here, and you're back here raising your family, and now you're giving back to the community. I think that's just fabulous, so, thank you.
And your parents are really invested, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Please give them my best.
I was gonna say, we should thank your parents as well, so. Anyway, congratulations, thanks for coming in. So if you guys want, you can adjourn.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Health adjourn.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye. Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you, thank you. Thanks again.
Thanks Maurice.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. That's good, that's good. Good seeing you all. Talk to John about his chickens. Okay, it is 7:35. We are expecting Planning Board at 7:45. So we have about 10 minutes. Let's go back, I think we can do it in the 10 minutes. The Budget Workshop, I just wanna, I unfortunately was not able to attend. Sometimes work does that, gets in the way of my volunteer. If I could just get thoughts, questions, comments that the three of you had, because you attended, and follow-up thoughts on what we need to do, or what you see. Makita, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, I, you know, this is the first time that I've participated in this exercise, and I have to say, just personally, it was extremely helpful to hear from department chairs and folks to explicitly talk about what, you know, what they, what they're asking for, what they thought they needed, why. And that context was, was immensely, immensely helpful. So, and I also just wanna say that it was, I really did appreciate the time and preparation that the staff went through to, to make those presentations as well. You could definitely tell that that was, that, that effort was made, so, yeah, just, just really appreciative of being able to hear that information and to have, have gone through that. Very informative, extremely informative, so.
Good, okay.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, I would second all of that. I think it's, it really is so important for us to have a better understanding of what the dollars actually go for, what our needs are, things that we haven't been able to fund. I think it's important to think about how long some of these requests have been, you know, reappearing every year, and how that we, they get pushed down the road. And sooner or later, I think that typically catches up with you, but, you know, so it was, it's very informative. And I do appreciate hearing from the department, department heads, and, you know, meeting them, getting to know a little bit more about them, or them personally. Not that it's not really a social gathering, so you don't get that kind of, but, but it's nice to see and hear how really dedicated they are and their, and their staff are to, to our community, and...
It is definitely one of those group settings that we don't get very often as Select Board because we don't get involved in the day-to-day. But to sit with the heads of the departments who do so much for the community, it's a great opportunity. So again, I'm sorry I missed it, but I'm glad the three of you were able to do it. And as you said Claudia, getting to know them a little bit better because you're with them in person and having that conversation. Great.
And then I would just add that, you know, it's interesting going through the budget and realizing just how little is sort of the discretionary amount that we have to work with because there's so much that goes toward things like medical insurance and benefits that are already allocated that we really don't have any control over, that costs keep escalating. So, you know, sometimes people think that, you know, everything is spent on staffing and it's not all spent on staffing. It's really spent on a lot of things that are kind of non-negotiable baked in, things that we have to do by state law. And it's interesting because like as our town has evolved, the needs have definitely changed. And it's, and what strikes me is that we're just, the budget is so tight that we're not able to really respond in the way that we really need to for what's best for Ashland. So, like the requests that came in from the departments are not, there's nothing that's like pie in the sky. There's, I mean, I remember like in Human Services, they're asking for someone else to help with things like the food pantry. Things that you would think are like non-starter requests, like we could fund that. But finding that money in the budget is really, really tough. And so, our staff continues to try to provide a level of service that, you know, is at a level that is really tough to sustain, given the demands of the community. So it's just, it always puts it in context, this, the department meeting. And I just thank you Michael for, you know, including us in that discussion because, and there were a couple FinCom members there too. And so, it really was a kind of a robust discussion. And it will help inform us as we go into our tri-board meeting. And then also just, you know, as we start really looking not just for this budget year but kind of years down the road and how we want to position ourselves and what the community expects from us. And how do we either manage those expectations or figure out a solution that's a better solution for Ashland? So, that's all, but it was good.
And just to add to your point about the non-discretionary funds and that, and it not being about staff. It certainly isn't about staff salaries because one of the most shocking things I would say for me since becoming a board member was seeing some of the salaries of our staff and.
I'd like to second that, that was shocking. And I think, I hope folks understand that and I just wanted to piggyback on that. Like, you know, it's not, to Brandy's point, there are certain regulatory constraints. Like we are mandated to have to do certain things. And these are not, they're non-negotiable, like, but we have to do that. And then, you know, confounding that with, you know, just the other constraints and what folks are making who work for town. I think that there's an impression in the greater public that public employees are making, you know, exorbitant amounts of money. They're making bank, that is categorically false, I can say. And I think the struggle, you know, in some ways this exercise was great because it does humanize things and it makes us think about the town and like the people that we're serving and the people who are helping Ashland residents. That's, in some ways, it's great to have been able to experience that. And other ways, it's gonna make it even more challenging to know that we can't do everything. And that, that's tough. Sorry.
No, it's true, it's true. But yeah, so just to, you know, for the public, you know, watching, so that was a budget workshop that was, you know, a public meeting, it was here. The next step of the budget process is what's called a tri-board meeting. And that is the Select Board, the School Committee and Finance Committee will be meeting on Saturday, March 1st, right here in Town Hall. It'll be a posted meeting because I expect full boards. I don't know that it'll be televised, I don't know that we've worked that out, only because of logistics.
If it's not gonna be televised, it's gonna be, it will be recorded in some way, shape or form.
Maybe FISA, I don't know. So we have to work out the logistics, but when it gets posted, if it's, if there is a hybrid possibility that will be posted with the meeting posting, but that's happening on Saturday, March 1st. And then there'll be a second one, if necessary, in April. So the budget process is ongoing. If you have questions, reach out to any of us, reach out to Michael or Jen and we can, you know, give you information on that, okay?
Could I just add just a couple things?
Yes, of course.
You know, just first off, thank you for attending, you know, I know. Claudia, I know you're retired, but I know you're very busy. And, you know, yeah, and Brandy and Makita, I appreciate, I appreciate, you know, I know how busy you are during your job, so I appreciate you taking the time to do that. And I think, you know, Brandy, I think it was you that said, I think we gotta think about our financial, our budget cycle, I think almost in a two-year format here, not just 26, but 27. And if we take that approach, I think that would be sound. But, you know, I do want to say, I appreciate the comments just about the, you know, the staff and, you know, how hard they work. I really hope, you know, what came through, it sounds like it did, is their dedication and just kind of the feeling of the team and being a part of it. Yeah, I mean, there are some people who work here that, you know, their motivation is, you know, a steady paycheck and everything and that's totally fine. Took me a while to get to that point, but like, not everybody is gonna be a barn burner. You don't need barn burners, you know, reorganization, but they all have a dedication to the town that is really kind of a source of their working.
Okay, so we will keep you updated on the process. Next, at 7:45, we have a joint meeting with the Planning Board to review the Talent Bank Form for Amanda Hayes, who is the current Associate Member. And she is seeking to fill the vacancy of Maurice, who has just stepped down. I see we have three members of the Planning Board online and we have Amanda online. So Tricia, why don't you go ahead and unmute and let's let you do what you need to do to get your meeting open?
Yeah, all I think I need to do is to call the Planning Board meeting to order right on time at 7:45. But we do expect, I think Anna's traveling right now, but she's gonna try to get on as well. But we do have a quorum for us so that we can, we can just go ahead.
Okay, great. So Amanda has put her name in and many of us know Amanda because we went through this process when we appointed her as Associate Member. But Amanda, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself to those who may not know you and let us know why you want to continue and move up to a full position on the Planning Board.
Sure, thank you all so much, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, I'm Amanda Hayes, I have been the Associate Member on the Planning Board for almost a year and a half now. And I've lived in Ashland for about five and a half years. I got involved and wanted to be on the Planning Board originally through the Comprehensive Plan Process and through applying to be a precinct rep for the Comprehensive Plan. And then the Associate Member seat on the Planning Board came up after sort of that process had closed. And I have so loved being a member of the Planning Board. I, you know, I find that, you know, engagement and serving my community is just so fulfilling. And for me, you know, I, serving with my other board members has been such a privilege. With this seat opening up, it's important to me to sort of seek that vacancy as a full voting member. I am really, really proud of our work as a board. And I'm really honored, like I said, to be a member of this Planning Board. And I just, it didn't feel right for me for the vacancy to come up and not seek it. So I, just a little bit of additional background, I have pulled papers to run for the seat for election in May as well. Because I know this is a temporary appointment just through the election, but I have pulled papers and in the signature gathering process for that as well.
Any questions from the Select Board for Amanda? Any Planning Board members, any questions or comments or?
No, I don't have a question, obviously we've been getting to know Amanda over the last, actually I don't even know how long it's been.
It seems like she's been there forever.
It feels like forever. But I just wanted to comment, and I think people know this already, but from my point of view, I think Amanda has been a great member of our team. She really brings a great logical, rational kind of viewpoint into things, but also can explain things or from a lay perspective. I have to imagine that her profession, you know, she's always working on complex problems and I think sometimes she's able to really, to talk about and explain complex problems and complex answers so that everyone who may be watching the Planning Board can understand. I think she brings a different kind of perspective to our board, not only with her profession, but as being relatively new to Ashland and having young kids, which is, you know, different, you know, on our board. So, yeah, we appreciate having her on and I would just open it up to any other Planning Board comments.
I'll echo exactly the same sentiments as Tricia. Amanda, you have been an amazing add to the team. And just like Tricia said, I think I cherish and hear your clarity in a lot of the things that you break it down so simple and I think that helps a lot. So thank you for being an amazing team member. And I love that you raised your hand for a lot of those tough times when we really hesitate to put those documents together. So thank you for all that you've done so far for the team.
Thank you both.
I'm super excited to have you as a member of the board. And my only question is, do you have someone to fill your shoes as the Associate Member?
I will definitely start chatting for folks if that vacancy comes up, yup.
Well, I think, I think we probably will want to fill it in the way the past two candidates have really been. From my perspective, you've been considered a full board member, I know it's not voting, but obviously, we value your input very much, as Kevin before. And you get to be part of the debates and all of that. So I think that might be a selling point to recruit an Associate Member too. But I'm super excited, I think we might be the, assuming this gets passed tonight, the first time on an elected board of all women in Ashland and I think that's kind of cool.
I would agree with you on that Kate, I think that's pretty cool that it's our Planning Board, one of the more technical boards that's gonna have that, that's very cool. Okay.
I do want to say that Anna has been trying to get on, but like I said, she's traveling and is having troubles. I did tell her that we had, we had three members of the Planning Board here, so she's just wanted to acknowledge her effort to try to participate.
Good, good, okay. Would someone from the Planning Board like to make the motion to make the appointment?
I will make a motion that we appoint Amanda Hayes as the fifth Planning Board Member, which term will run until the election in May.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, we all vote together? Aye.
Aye.
We actually should do a remote, Jerzak?
Aye.
Deepa?
Aye.
Kendall?
Aye.
Okay, that carries a seven zero. So, welcome Amanda. Thank you Planning Board Members for being here, thank you Amanda for being here. And just a reminder Amanda, make sure you go get sworn in before the next Planning Board meeting so you can be an official member. Thank you for running.
Which is a week from tomorrow, so.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations Amanda.
Congratulations Amanda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night Amanda, then you guys just need to close your meeting and.
Yes, I see Anna just getting on, actually, she's trying to get on. Let me just see if she, Anna, did you make it on? I am.
I see her name.
I see her name, I'm not sure, she's getting a full connection, but. I've also been texting with her as well to, as she has been trying to get on. So I will let her know the results if she's unable to hear us.
Hey, I'm able to hear you guys.
There she is, okay.
I just, I'm listening in as I'm driving, so I apologize, it wasn't the safest to just unmute you, but I am listening in.
Oh yeah, so Anna, if you did not hear, we did just vote and we, Amanda Hayes is, will be filling that seat until the election in May.
Wonderful, congratulations Amanda.
Thanks so much.
And then you guys just.
That's spectacular.
And on that note, we are going to, I will take a motion to close the Planning Board meeting.
I'm moved.
And so that the Select Board can get on with their work, is there a second?
Oh, second now.
And a roll call vote?
Deepa and Kaitai.
Anna and Kaitai.
Katherine and Jerzak, aye.
And Tricia and Kaitai, so we will see everybody next week. Thank you, thank you Select Board.
Congratulations Amanda, thank you all for dropping in, appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
Night everybody.
Good night, congrats Amanda.
Thank you.
That leads us to our next appointment, it's a little bit early, but I see Aaron here. So Aaron, if you don't mind, we'll take you at 7:55 versus 8 o'clock and. Yeah, good thanks. That's okay, just, yup, have the, make sure that's turned on.
So I didn't prepare any formal presentation, but I forwarded along spreadsheets and answers to questions and those. So you tell me how I can best help.
If you want to go through that information, I think that was just. What are you working on, what, you know, what, I think there was discussion about some of the CPC funds and where things are at and projects that are under CPC, things like that.
So I've been Chair of the CPC for about five years now, I've been on the board for about eight. The previous Chair, I think, was Chair for 23 years, so there's been two in the history of Ashland. We are one of the original CPC founders, going back about 25 years now for CPC. So looking at the history, you can look at all the projects, including literally this space as a CPC project. So there was questions about what we're currently working on, what we worked on in the past. I think kind of the key takeaways are, is, you asked about vacancies, we have two vacancies on our committee. All about ongoing projects, there are some things like the fire truck, that's not listed there because they've allocated their funds, but the project's not complete. So there's things like that. The library recently did a painting project, they're complete, so they'll close that out at some point. The dog park, we've allocated funds, they're going through Planning Board process. There's things like the Riverwalk project, which are ongoing and discussion. So that's kind of the status of projects. And then a status of kind of the funding is, our spend versus replacement is increasing budget. Meaning, I'm trying to raise that, you know, in the next five to six years, we will have upwards of $10 million available for the various buckets. So CPC is not a flush fund per se, it's an appointment of affordable housing, open space and recreation. And I'm gonna miss one because, thank you, historic preservation. So it has to fall within those guidelines. For funding wise, just a reminder that some of the money comes from the state directly as a grant or a matching percentage. Those are about estate sales, right, like when you sell property.
Yes, the real estate, it's a charge.
So there was questions about how that fund is doing, but it has matched every grant possible the last few years, so we're matching with the state money. And our own coffers are a match of what we spend annually as well as paying off bonds. We have four current bonds, two of those expire in the next three years, I believe. So those again will take off our balance sheet. And so, that's where we are. So, it's, anybody remember the movie Brewster's Millions?
Yes.
Wow.
So, some people do. Michael obviously laughed. The premise of the movie is a gentleman has a deceased relative, and the deceased relative plays a game on him, and he says, I'll give you thirty million dollars today, but if you spend every dollar of it, I will give you three hundred million dollars. If you don't spend all thirty million dollars of it, you get nothing. So, and he has to do it in thirty days. So, he has like this contest basically to try to spend thirty million dollars in thirty days.
I was wondering where you're going with it.
It's not as easy as you might think to spend money, right? So, even though we have money available, it takes resources to spend money of project management, staff oversight, political will, timeline, et cetera. So, that's where I'm getting with the Brewster's Millions of like, yes, there's funds available, but it requires staff and people to do it. By the way, it's a fun movie of, he spends every, he spends every dollar.
Oh, you've never seen it? Oh, you gotta watch it.
Yeah.
Was it a remake? Oh, I'm thinking of the one in the remake. I'm thinking of the remake.
I didn't realize the eighties was a remake. Oh.
But I use it as an example of, again, our pot of money is growing, but it's a challenge to figure out, you know, who can, who could spend the money, who can do it, who can allocate it. So, it's just good to see, you know, where we're at in the next couple of years for our projects. You asked for a quick overview? Perhaps that's a quick overview of where we are. So, does that raise questions, comments, concerns?
Is there a limit on how much you can spend, or does it, does this have to maintain a certain level or anything like that? I mean, if there was some project that.
You have annual revenue and you can't spend beyond that. When we have had certain projects, we've decided whether to bond or pay cash. So, like the most recent large project for us is the Valentine Estate. We bonded that, so I think it was a twenty-year bond or thirty, either way, we bonded it. So, you know, like, like any type of purchase, you could decide whether you want to bond it or pay cash. Can't go negative. You can't.
Right.
Can't borrow against future earnings, but otherwise that, there are four separate accounts. So, you can't transfer between accounts, so you can't really spend. You can't spend all of it on a affordable housing project because some of it is open space recreation fund, some of it is historic preservation. So, can't spend it all in one area.
What, what has been the hardest account to work off? Like, I'm looking at the amount sitting in, in community housing.
That's affordable housing, so community housing is a title for it. There's been discussions statewide that that has become a problem. I think there was a cover story in The Globe maybe a year ago, talking about how CPC sort of competes with itself. That many towns have used afford, have used open space money to acquire land to
to.
Protect it from affordable housing.
Yeah.
And I would agree that we have, as far as I've been here, we have not had a single project that has done affordable housing. There are opportunities that some towns are doing of what affordable housing can mean. It can mean building it. But it can also mean buying the rights to it.
Right.
So, let's say you have a hundred unit development, and they're proposing ten percent affordable housing. You can buy ten percent credits to get to a number.
To a twenty percent or twenty-five percent.
Buy ten more to get to thirty percent, or whatever you want to do. So, some towns do that of, they don't build it per se, but they buy.
Affordability.
They buy affordability, or they buy the credits from the developer. That's obviously a negotiating tactic with the planning board and staff of like, what the developer wants.
Right.
But that's what, one way they use the money. Other places are, again, literally buying land and building, building it. Different towns have different organizations that can do it better or easier, meaning they might have a nonprofit. They can literally do nonprofit affordable housing in that town, but that's probably the hardest, and it's been historically the hardest. At least as long as I've been on the board, but it's also a statewide conundrum.
Now, we, I know that Habitat for Humanity is coming in. Are they looking for any funding from us to help them out from our affordability?
You know, I thought they were.
Yeah, I thought they were.
I don't remember have, initially when we were talking, I thought.
I know when we were initially chatting with them, and we've approved them, and, and they're getting ready to break ground, they're, or they're in front of the planning board.
I think they were getting money from the trust, actually.
Affordable Housing Trust, okay.
And historically, that's, that has, that is what has happened here. So CPC and town meeting through their votes have transferred money from that CPC of, you know, community housing bucket to the trust.
Right.
Trust can be a little bit more nimble, a little bit more.
They don't have to wait for a town meeting vote or anything like that. They can just make a decision.
But that, that hasn't, we haven't had a vote like that in a long time, to transfer money from CPC, community housing, to the trust.
Two thousand and seven and two thousand and nine.
Wow.
Oh, wow.
So, that's, you could move money from CPC to the Affordable Trust, so that you could use it more easily.
Because the trust, once they have the funds, can be a little bit more nimble.
Correct.
Because the only vote that you'll take is at town meeting to say, okay, we're going to transfer, you know, five hundred thousand from CPC to the Affordable Housing Trust, and then the trust has the money available and they use it.
And then the trust could, can the trust then buy land and, and hire a developer and?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's.
They've tried.
They've tried that. They've, we have, there's a parcel on Oak Street that they've tried that with. They, we have used some.
They tried it with Cherry Street when the Fredensia House was there.
That's right, with the Fredensia, right. They actually, yeah.
Right, right. That's the one I hear about most often.
So, there's Olive Street, there's the corner spot, which is an example of that. Farmer's Market too, or no, that's, I think that's a creation.
No, not the farmer's market.
But so, just.
And then they have done some funding with the units on Route one twenty-six. There's twenty units. The.
So, sixteen units at the twelve.
Twelve Pond Street, so it was a twenty-unit development. They were only going to do two affordable. We helped buy two more units. So, four of them are affordable, which made them twenty-five percent.
We made it twenty-five percent affordable.
Yes, the old Marconis, right, so.
We did that so we could get it up to twenty-five percent affordable, which allowed us to count all the units, which are affordable housing.
Yeah, so I noticed on the vacancies on CPC that there's a vacancy that's normally a seat for Affordable Housing Trust. How long has that been vacant?
Four to five years.
Okay, all right. So, I would say we should make sure, make sure that the trust is aware.
Yeah, Joe's not here tonight, obviously, and Joe's our, our Affordable Housing Trust guy, but, you know.
Because you have, you're supposed to have, what, nine members?
Yeah, we're nine members, four are at-large, and five are state mandated, so. Meaning, the planning board has a rep, the open space has a rep regardless of what town you're in.
Right.
So, that is a mandated one to be there.
Could you talk a little bit about what the process is for, like, if, if we had a project or another group had a project and wanted to look into CPC funding, what, you know? Sort of the lead time to come to CPC, town meeting, what that process looks like, the funding mechanism, how long? How long the, the project before it gets sunsetted and all that? Just sort of like logistics around the funding?
Logistics, my favorite word. What we do and what I'd like to do are two different things of, I would prefer to have a multi-year, you know, timeline of, here are the list of projects coming, and here's what could get funded one year and whatnot, trying to avoid last-minute applications. It has functioned in six, we've been trying to keep projects relevant for both town meetings because I think it's important for CPC to be present in the community, to show that money's getting spent and projects aren't going. So, we've done small projects, as you've noticed the last couple of years, to try to keep in front. And we've tried to have those back up within the timelines of, you know, you're applying by January for spring town meeting, you're applying by September for fall town meeting, so that we're following the CPC Finance Committee, you know, review template to meet in town morning articles. We'll hold a public hearing for any, you know, review of formal applications, any of the timeline to do that. We used to meet honestly monthly. I pulled that back a little bit to probably bi-monthly or cancel a summer meeting to try to help our members be more engaged versus just have meetings, have meetings. So, we're trying to make our meetings efficient of really reviewing applications. So, I've answered your question maybe in a little bit of a longabout way.
Yeah.
But the general consensus is we have to fall within your timeline of when articles are posted. The second half of that is, once we have an article, we've made every every warrant article, have a three-year shot clock for projects. I thought that was important so that we weren't just giving money to applicants with a no sunset date. It doesn't mean they can't continue it. Like the Riverwalk project, they got to the end of three years and then came back. So, all projects, we've given a roughly three-year shot clock, meaning if it's September, we usually say December thirty-first and then add three years. But it's helped projects not just take the money and sit on it. I haven't been in a Housing Trust one because that's a little different, but every project, project one has been a three-year shot clock one. Because you want to make sure the money gets spent. Or, like, we had a project that we approve a hundred thousand dollars for. If they only spend ninety thousand dollars, and the project's done, it goes back to the town based on the bylaw then, as opposed to just sitting in an account for three, five, ten years or whatever, and no mechanism return it. So, we've gone with a three-year shot clock with, if you get towards the end of the three years, you just ask for an extension. But that way, it has to go before town meeting to approve that extension or not, so that it's relevant.
So, I have one more question. So, you know, we were talking about the Housing Trust and how we could, town meeting could transfer money, CPC funds into the Affordable Housing Trust bucket, or from the, from the Affordable Housing bucket to the trust.
Yep.
Could we do that with like the historical stuff too? Like, I'm thinking if there was funding mechanism for like some sort of historical, I don't want to call it a grant project, but that's kind of what I'm thinking, where if the Historical Commission, say, you know, say out of that historic bucket, has a hundred thousand dollars transferred to the, to the Historic Commission, could we do something like that, where they would have a process for doling that out as?
Yeah, so the note about that is kind of who you're giving the money to.
Yeah.
And they either need to be the land owner, so in the case of like Housing Trust, right, like they own property.
Yeah.
So, because they own the property, the deed restriction, you know, like it has CPC restrictions on the land.
Okay.
Or it's a nonprofit five oh one C three entity type of thing. So, think Sudbury Valley Trustees, right? Like, you know, they could apply for a open space and recreation application, and the money would go to them, and they would oversee the land. So, it's either one of those two. So, actually, the third is like internal of like, we give it to ourselves, basically of like.
Like the Riverwalk.
Yeah, yeah, we're basically giving it to ourselves.
Or the Dog Park Committee.
But otherwise, it fits into those categories of, you know, who owns the land, or who is the nonprofit entity to manage that type of property.
Could, could it be?
So, sorry to.
Oh, no, no, keep going, keep going. I'm sorry, I'm in disruption.
I didn't answer your question, my historical question, because I don't know what they are. I don't know if they're a nonprofit or a town organization or what they are.
I don't.
But I paused when I'm like, okay, who are we giving the money to specifically?
I don't know that the Historic Commission is an entity that can take funds and dole them out.
Yeah.
I think it would have to be a CPC project, right? I don't, I don't think we can say, okay, here Historic Commission, here's a hundred thousand dollars to do stuff, historic renovation or something like that.
Yeah.
I don't think it's that, I don't.
Yeah, but Michael, you know, you know where I'm going with this, right? Like, if, like, if they, if the Historic Commission, for instance, like if the Federated Church needed twenty-five thousand dollars for repairs, could, instead of like taking the, going and asking for the twenty-five thousand dollars from CPC, if there could be a, if there could be money already allocated that we could tap into, where we could utilize that to help, to help preserve historic buildings? I'm just trying to think of like.
Yeah, I, so CPC, you know, I, I think the law is really, you know, can be a little bit confusing in terms of using CPC money for private projects. So, it's certainly been done before. Like, I mean, we've used CPC funds for the Telecron building. There was like a real specific purpose for that building and like a real, you know, specific nexus with, you know, historical stuff. So, in terms of being able to like fund, basically put money in a bank essentially, to use as a grant program, I, you know, I'm not sure. It's something that I think, you know, we can look into.
So, you're trying to get to like the Affordable Housing Trust, right? So, we take money from CPC, we give it to the Affordable Housing Trust, and they work on affordable stuff.
Right.
Can we do similar to with historic?
Yeah.
I think the difference is the Affordable Housing Trust has a, like, they have.
They're an entity.
An entity, they have bylaws, they have.
Their own entity.
Like, it's very clear.
They're separate from the town.
What their focus is.
Could you create an entity that was the historic?
Yes, I mean, I grew up in Lexington, and so that historical had that ability, and you go to their CPC, and they have a entity within themselves that can get money, spend money. Now, that's probably three hundred years old, but, so some towns have those organizations. In the same kind of fashion that like, to be honest, Ashland doesn't have a Conservation Commission that can take money. So, again, other towns, you can give money to the Conservation Commission because they are its own entity type of thing. Open space sometimes is its own thing. So, Ashland doesn't quite have the groups to.
Set up like that.
Like I said before, with like, who could spend the money? That's one of the problems we run into is, we don't have enough stakeholders that can spend money to do projects.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, Jen ends up being project manager for many of them, as opposed to, like, a great project we're doing is the Fire Truck, is a great example, right? We have, we have a stakeholder, we have a group of employees, we have everything there that can do it, and they can run with it, right? You know, we just don't have a ton of those where, you know, they can literally run with that type of project.
Yeah, Aaron, Aaron made, you know, the point earlier. I was really glad to hear it. You know, our biggest limitation is having the staff to implement some of these things.
Right.
So, that, that's kind of tough.
Yeah.
But you could actually, could you hire a staff person and pay them from, if you had these different entities set up, then could you have a, like, sort of, I guess, the way Jen currently does it, right?
You could do it two ways. CPC funds can actually be used to hire staff. There are some towns that do that. I don't quite know the specifics of like, you have to approve it every year, or you get, you put in a fund, but you can hire staff. And you can also hire for, what I think is the more important thing, which we did more of, which is hire for planning money. So, I've taken, we know, lots of people are talking about doing these in the middle school fields. You can't, you can't build turf, but there's missing tennis courts, and there's missing lights. There, there's a lot of things that are happening there. And we don't know if it's a million-dollar project or a four-million-dollar project and what's involved. And you can approve a hundred thousand dollars to go do an engineering study, right? So, you can, you could spend money to know money, right? So, you could spend a hundred thousand dollars to figure out how much is it going to be. We did that with the Charlie Book Trail project. So, we initially approved fifty thousand dollars to engineer it. Then they told us, all right, it's a half a million-dollar project. We'll get half of that money from CPC, we'll have from other places. So, there is opportunity to spend money to, you know, use it later type of thing. Yeah.
Part of, it's a portion of the Framingham Project, but they're doing a feasibility study, just to see how they can try to restore that part. And so, the hope is that then, if we find out that there is a solution that's feasible, then we will likely come back to CPC and ask for implementation funds.
Is this something we could do to move the Upper Charles Trail along? Like, do we, I mean, I know one of the restrictions there is having someone to manage the project in regards to the engineering of it, and the mapping of it, and the parcel discussion. I mean, could we do something with CPC funds?
We have, I mean.
I know we've done some.
So, we did part of it.
Right? Because there, there are certain things that we want to move the project along, certainly looking at potential change in federal funding coming down the road. Do we want to move some things along? Is this a possibility?
I think some, you know, we'd have to look into and see, number one, if that's feasible, what that would look like, if CPC would be on board.
Right.
I mean, I have seen CPC funds used for like housing planners, you know, to fund ongoing housing planners. Potentially, maybe you could do a transportation planner. I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I think, you know, we would want to make sure that we could fund that position for a while.
Right.
Because it's still going to take a lot of like current staff time just to bring that person up to speed.
Right, which is one of the things we've talked about before, right? People say, oh, we'll just hire someone to do this, hire a consultant. Okay, well, you still need to take some staff time to get that consultant up to speed. To get that consultant up to speed before they can actually be doing some real work. So, I mean, looking at our fund balance. Do we know how much of this will go away? Like of each of these projects, right? And, you know, so the high school fields. No, no, not the, not the projects, but the bond payments, right? Because that's something we always, you know, I know.
Yes.
I know we see that at a town meeting how much goes to each.
Afterwards, but like, so the high school project is like four hundred thousand dollars a year annually. What else is on the list?
You got Oak Street.
Oak Street.
Oak Street gives about two hundred thousand dollars annually. And it, does it have the fiscal year on there?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
Um, Warren Woods bond.
Now you're gonna test my brain.
Warren Woods, I think, is a mixture of different ones.
Right, I know.
No, but it's how much the annual bond.
Just the annual bond payment. I know it comes out of different buckets.
I'll look it up if I can.
Okay, and then the Valentine property CPA portion.
Yeah, Brandy sent it to me. There, I remember the largest one and then.
Okay, that's fine. We can, we can get that. So, so in, 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 even if we look at this, right? So, you know, the high school fields, that's gonna be another.
It was getting at what I was trying to describe, which was, uh, here, here we go. Uh, Oak Street bond payment is. Uh, a hundred and thirty-one thousand. The high school fields is two hundred and ninety-two thousand. The Warren Woods is a hundred and forty-eight thousand and the Valentine is forty-five thousand.
Annually.
Annually. So what I was trying to describe was when those other ones come off the books in three years, in addition to adding approximately. Half a million to a million dollars annually, we'd be adding another.
That's not being used. That will not be used.
As I said, in three years, if we continue our current spend, we would have in excess of ten million dollars.
Right.
In addition to a roughly about a million dollars a year.
And, and have, has CPC on its own sort of looked at or received from the, the committees that are sitting there? Any discussion about what could be done or looking at what's going on? You know, we have an open space plan that we've been working on based on that input. Or in, I mean, have you, have, as a committee, have you had a discussion saying, okay, we know we're gonna have all these funds? What are some things that we're hearing people want to have done that we could do?
Yeah, that's really our number one task right now is to try to kind of solicit that. We're getting somewhere from town. We ask school committee, we ask the different groups of what's out there. Um, I, I guess if you had at least like multi-year thing, the big ones that are coming up are. Upper Charles Trail, which is, do you spend all of it at once? Do you spend it portionality? Or how do you compete for, for grants? Meaning the tips process is a, you do it all at once or do you do segments? And so that's a big thing there. There are, um, Planning Board will bring up for any type of big projects. They'll discuss that. There is the Town Forest, who has at least identified, all right, here are the five or six parcels that, you know, that became available. We'd purchase. We literally just did one of those. It didn't need to use CPC funds for that, but there are another five or six that if they ever became available.
Mm-hmm.
You see CPC, or you could have a batch of money in a pile to use to acquire those properties.
Right.
But there's that. I mentioned Athletic Fields is one that comes up all the time.
Right.
There are restrictions.
For turf and stuff, yeah.
Other things.
Yeah.
Um, you mentioned the church earlier. Uh, can't use it for religious reason, per areas, so.
Okay.
Yeah, there's all these little asterisks things that come up with that. I think it's come up of, we're doing a comprehensive plan to try to help us. Identify what are the priorities.
Right.
And hopefully that identifies that like, here's what we should do. I think the biggest balance we will have in the next few years is. Is it worth doing one or two really, really big projects that are really impactful and one area? Or is it a little bit here, a little bit there, piece here, piece there? Cause, you know.
Hmm.
You think of, tha- tha- that's what we don't know is.
Right.
Is it worth going to pick on the middle school fields for a sec? Going there and saying, all right, here's five million dollars. Let's redo the whole thing and get it right, right?
Yeah.
Let's get it right for the next thirty years. Or is it a playground here, an arboretum here, a little bit of forest here, a little bit of trail here, that? Um, I have a friend who is the, a chair of the Hopkinton um, Community Preservation Committee. He was kind of raising like, hey, we have money to spend, we have money to spend. And then at one town meeting, they had four multimillion dollar projects all come at once. And they had to turn down school and an open space request because it literally came at the same time.
Right.
And it was like, you know, the school was crushed, the open space was crushed. It was like, y'all came at once, like type of thing.
Yeah.
Um, so that's.
A couple, a couple of things, you know, I would just encourage CPC to consider. So, you know, number one, yeah, I think, you know, if you got a ten million dollar war chest, that's pretty sizable. Um, there could be some potential sizable purchases. Uh, and I'll just label it purchase. I don't know what, what that looks like.
Right.
There could be some substantial problems slash opportunities that reveal themselves in the coming years. That we're, we're not aware of right now. You know, I think we know of a couple of places that are in somewhat precarious positions. And I think they have an important cultural value to the town. So, you know, we might, you know. Maybe you want to ask CPC to kind of think about that and keep some in the background. The other thing CPC might want to consider, I think, is. Like a policy moving forward where, like, okay, you know, you're getting this much coming in and, and maybe your policy is like, okay, we'll spend. Kind of the taxpayer portion, um, you know, right away, but anything we get from the state would be banked, you know, for the future. You know, just something like that, just kind of where you're.
Yeah.
Got a little structure to it.
Are there any regulations around having to um, have, you know, not the CPC not being able to fund something in its entirety? That there has to be um, another, like the town has to partake in some way?
No. Um, we've done full, we've done the dog park, you know, as Stanton Grant, town money, CPC money. Um, so it can be a mix, it could be everything. There's no.
We have definitely, we have definitely used it as a match for grants though. And so oftentimes, so.
It's a great resource.
For the Riverwalk, we needed to have a match. And so having a town meeting vote allocating, you know, a certain portion. Was made our case a lot stronger. Um, we've done that on a number of projects.
Yeah, that's why.
A lot of.
But we don't have to do with, I mean, I think we use it the other way as opposed to them requiring us to match. We use them as a match.
A lot of grant organizations will like, will, will like to see that as a town, you're putting some money toward it. And you're not expecting all of it to come through from the grant that, and the more you can match, sometimes the higher grant reward that you get.
Right. Yeah, but it's not that, it's not that the CPC couldn't. Fully fund something if the town was the partner in.
So the, the, um, the parcel, the UC, the parcel that we just purchased, right?
Yeah.
There was a grant opportunity and we, we could have not gone for the grant and said, okay, we're gonna. We certainly could have funded it completely from, from our CPC funds, but the question was, why do that? If we can get other tax dollars back to our community, let's do that and save our CPC funds for either longer term projects or bigger projects where. Either there's no grant available or we're less likely to get the grant for whatever.
Right, I'm not suggesting that we wouldn't.
No, 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 I know you're not. I'm just.
And although that grant might not happen, is that true? Because it's one of the.
Well, we did get, I was gonna update everybody later, but um, I can update them now? No, we, we're.
We're getting it?
We're getting that, that money.
So we'll be okay.
I know we're running late, but could I ask?
Yeah.
Just one question. Um, Aaron, I know you've got, you know, a mixture of kind of newer members and longtime members, but like, how long has Devon been on? I think Devon's kind of your most senior member.
Uh, I can't speak to before me because they, they didn't tell me when they started, but Devon and Gretchen were on when I started. Um, so they would be the most senior, I would say.
So you, you said.
I think they've been here before I started.
So you said you have two vacancies. One is the Affordable Housing Trust. Is the other one an at-large member? So that is for us to appoint?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that Donna's old seat?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Um, I know I'm over time, but I'd be remiss if I didn't at least mention, when we, we talked about closing out projects and sunsetting them.
Yeah.
I'd be remiss if we don't at least mention of, when a project is closed out, it has a deed restriction against it. Um, and the corner spot and the farmer's market are still precarious.
Without a CR?
What?
Are they without their CRs or?
They're without their CRs.
Okay.
Um, the corner spot was acquired with affordable housing money. You understand the precariousness of that?
Yep.
And the uh, farmer's market uh, does not have a, in that case is an example of who acquired the property.
Hmm.
Um, if we had a nonprofit organization.
That could hold the CR or run it, right?
So those two are examples of not just where the money's going, but who's it going to and how they get managed. So just be remiss that those are two outstanding ones that I personally have struggled with the like, I just don't know how to resolve it. Um, but just raise that it's one that we will continue to follow.
And both of those are related to affordable, aren't they? Isn't the, the?
Yeah, there, there is.
I mean, I know Corner Spot was, was purch, I mean, the affordable, the Affordable Housing Trust owns the Corner Spot right now.
Yes.
Right? So I know that's been an issue. So, okay, we have to follow up with affordable on that. And then wasn't it similar to the farmer's market?
Farmer's Market's a little different.
Oh, that was.
Open space.
It's open space.
And affordable housing.
It's a mix.
And community, yeah, and community housing.
And that was done to the um, ARA when that was in, and we don't have, the ARA has been disbanded.
No.
So.
That one's pretty complicated. Ashland redevelopment authority.
So ARA was Ashland Redevelopment Authority. And we had that and then it got disbanded because they weren't, I forget exactly why, but. You might know.
There was a lot of, there was a lot of, there was a lot of things, so. That was how I got sucked into town stuff. No, we didn't have, I don't think we had like um, full members and then we also, the, a lot of the projects that we had worked on. Was really kind of absorbed more into the town side and.
Right.
It wasn't really needed anymore.
Right, I think that was part of it, that the, you know, the redevelopment wasn't really happening, so, okay.
Um, owned the, the farmer's market parcel and then that transferred back to the town when the ARA dissolved, so. Um, but I know like, now that we're talking about it, it was probably what, a couple of years ago that. I came to a CPC meeting and we were talking about the conservation restriction on that parcel. And I thought, I, I thought you guys were gonna start that process of working, I know.
I looked over my shoulder just cause um.
Trisha, Trisha was on, yeah.
So Trisha Kendall is a member of Planning Board.
And she's your appointee to the CPC for.
Correct. And she has discussed researching that more. Again, I think we're just struggling with.
Where to start?
Not where to start, but who, who's.
Who's gonna do it?
Who's gonna step forward, right? You know, what group is gonna step forward to say?
Yeah.
Us, like, you know, it's.
On and off, since I've been sitting here, we've had a CR working group, a conservation restriction working group, and they've looked at different parcels. Talking about making sure the correct CRs are on certain parcels, so.
We don't have that. So we don't have a CR.
We don't.
No, we don't have an active group. And I think that we had discussed seeing if CPC was gonna be willing to take that on. And I think they, I think they said that they would, but I think it's just sort of unclear how to proceed.
It's not unclear, it's uh.
It's just finding the time.
Uh, to be honest, I don't think it's finding the time. It's uh, who do I identify, right? Like, you know, we can knock on ten thousand doors, but I, I'm not sure there's a door to knock on that would do it. Um, so there really has to be a group or an entity that is worth knocking on the door of. So I don't think it's a time thing. I don't think it's a resource thing. I think it's literally a. Group needs to step forward to say.
We're gonna take this on and work through this.
And like with Valentine, there's somebody stepping forward to say, we're gonna hold the CR, right?
Right.
Because there's an entity willing to do that, it's done.
Right.
That group isn't gonna do it for the farmer's market, so.
Right.
Unless we're gonna start a nonprofit, uh, like unless somebody steps forward and says, I'm gonna start a five oh one C three that's gonna be the Ashland Farmer's Market.
Well, so the Ashland Farmer's Market is a five oh one C three.
Or, but they hold it.
But, but, but I'm just saying, I don't know if that's like something that they would be willing to do.
Hmm, that's interesting.
It might be an idea.
Might be a question for them.
So.
I merely wanted to raise that it's an outstanding item.
No, absolutely. Glad you mentioned it.
And I, and I know, I'm pretty sure the Affordable Housing Trust is aware of the issue with the corner spot.
They are.
Because of the, the conversation has been, you know, do they give the money back to CPC? But how does that work? Um, so I know that's been in their discussions as well. So. I will, I will take on the task of talking to Affordable Housing.
Okay.
Regarding their not having someone coming to CPC and how we're gonna handle Corner Spot.
Okay. And Michael, what do you think about the whole farmer's market? Thing? Like, is that something that?
It, it's, it's something I certainly think we could approach to them. Uh, that CR is gonna be very, very complicated.
Yeah.
Just, you know, because you do have this combo of affordable and open space.
Right.
You know. Aaron, you mentioned it earlier? Um, I don't know, somebody mentioned it earlier. Um, Ashland had a really unique strategy. Maybe it wasn't that unique. It sounded like maybe some other communities doing it, where they would use affordable housing money. They would combine affordable housing CPC funds with open space to purchase, basically to leverage. More money to put towards open space acquisition and preservation. And um. You know, I'm not necessarily sure how much of an intent to actually build affordable housing was there. Um, but in any case, uh, those are the two buckets related to the farmer's market parcel. It's just gonna be very, very, it's gonna be a little complex.
Right. Do you think, do you think like we should reach out to the farmer's market? Do you think that?
I'm happy to do it, you know, just to see if that's something that they'd be interested in.
So when the money was.
I've already got it on, on, on the list here.
The money from the affordable housing section, when that was used in part for Corner Spot. Then didn't that sunset so that it needed to be returned?
Well, it was already, so it was already spent, Claudia, so um, so.
But then did it, but it was already spent, but then it wasn't, it didn't serve its purpose, right?
Well, it was spent to acquire the property.
Right.
With the hope that something could have been done with the building that was there to turn it into affordable housing.
And we did like RFPs and stuff.
Things and they try, and it just didn't make sense to build affordable housing there because.
I don't think they could get anybody to do it.
No.
We got one proposal and it just wasn't that great.
And it wasn't.
And this was year.
Financially feasible, right? Like the, the, the amount of money to create, to make it into something affordable was, it just didn't make sense.
But like Aaron was talking about, like, when CPC funds are used for a project, there's a deed restriction.
Right. So that's why I'm.
That's why we need a CR on the, on the, on the parcel, but it's complicated.
Or a financial. Transfer.
Right, right.
Okay.
So the, in that case then, the, that those funds were used in part to do the. RFP basically?
So the, the, when, when the, when the funds were transferred to affordable housing to purchase that parcel, the Cherry Street parcel. The, again, the idea was they were gonna build affordable. So that's why it's owned by the trust.
That didn't work out. But what I don't understand is how do you, should, should it have been in, including in it anyways? Engineering or some kind of a, a, you know, a proposal for.
It was one of those things where it's like, okay, we have the opportunity to purchase this property. We could potentially use it for affordable. There was also a, a, a larger plan for affordable, so that it wasn't just gonna be the corner, it was potentially gonna be some other lots. And then things have, you know, as time changes and things didn't happen. So I know there's now a question as to. Does the, does the trust have to give money back to CPC?
Right.
So that it can stay as open space. I don't even know if they could do a swi, you know, I don't know. So there's, there's some work that needs to be done to figure out. What needs to happen with that parcel.
Okay.
Good thing I started early. Sorry for taking over my.
No, 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 no. Jim, thank you for your patience, but it's been a good discussion.
Yeah, Aaron, thank you.
No problem.
Thanks, Aaron.
Helpful, very helpful.
We uh, we'll maybe have a few things at town meeting in the spring, but we'll be updated on those. Thank you for your time.
Sounds good.
Great, no, thank you. I think it's been a great discussion for us and hopefully people who are watching and. As always, it's good to know what's going on with, with taxpayer dollars so that people can understand where it's going, so.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Jim, come on up.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Everybody have copy, probably do somewhere, of the report? I don't know if you bought, I, I have hard copies.
Okay.
There's like three hundred of them downstairs, Jim.
Well, you know, I've, I've been handing them out like on the street.
Okay, hey, you gotta get the word out somehow, right?
That's exactly right. Well, good evening, everybody. I'm Jim Nielsen. Uh, for those of you who don't know, I'm the chairman of the Ashland Historical Commission and also on the Local Historic District Study Committee. Which is just about wrapped up. Um, what you have in front of you is the final report. Uh, I don't remember the last time I was here before the Select Board, but I think this was in a very early draft stages. And now this has been vetted by the state, uh, by the Massachusetts Historical Commission, and it's also been, um, run by the Town Council, and she had no objections with it. We're in the process, we're actually gone through all the steps, let me just, I have a quick presentation just to give you a, a brief outline of what, what it is and what it isn't, uh, just to remind everybody. I know I've talked to a few of you individually over the past few months and, uh, just to get, get a sense of where we are. Now, how do I do this? I just hit the slide thing? Yep. On the bottom. Yeah. Did that work? Nope. Oh, maybe. The keyboard, okay, there we go. All right, why create a local historic district? Well, this backs up to when the, uh, the Historic Commission was reconstituted back five years ago. Um, we had a, a, a little bit of time getting together, uh, and getting our feet underneath us, but as we were doing this, uh, one of the big issues that came up besides demolition delays was the, was the mill building issue. And it came to everybody's attention that there's no, there's no vehicle in this town to prevent the destruction of, um, of historical buildings. Uh, a local historic district is the only mechanism available to preserve historic buildings. Did a lot of research. There's things, um, that people think of like the National Historic Register, um, it doesn't protect things. Uh, local demolition delays, which we have, are only good for a year, when we've got the bylaw changed to a year. Um, and basically, this is to maintain the character of our downtown. Ashland's quickly losing its historic buildings and demo delays and National Registry of Historic Buildings are not quite, whoops, that's not quite fitting in the whole thing. Uh, they don't quite cut it. Now, this is the map, and that's on page twenty-four, I believe, in front of you. The proposed district goes from up the top, you have on the upper left in the north is the Ashland Historical Society. Down Main Street, it includes the mill building site, even though we're fully aware that the mill buildings are really kinda off the table for this discussion because they're forty B project and we have no control over that. But it keeps going to those buildings by the church, the, it used to be an old general store next to the church. Uh, all the way down, taking the corner on Front Street down to the library. Um, and then across the street, which is the farmer's market area, and across the tracks to over the old Historical Railroad Station. There's a little jog across the street from that on Homer Ave to the building that houses, uh, which now is Zen Dental and the pizza place and the Chris's Barber, the post office, and back on Main Street going up past John Stones, Lunkers, which is the old Ashland General Store, uh, the fire station, Town Hall, the Ashland Housing Authority red brick building out front, and the plaza that's next to this building, which is, and, uh, then also the Purple House and the Corner Spot. Uh, the Purple House is actually, uh, the only residential house in this, in this whole dis- proposed district. Everything else commercial or town owned. Um, the reason we kept it to this is because we thought we didn't wanna, um, go overboard on this. We could've kept going up Main Street towards like Matter East, all those houses on Main Street, some of them could qualify under this too, but we wanted to keep it downtown and make it more of a local historic downtown district. Okay, just a couple of pictures of some of the buildings. Forty-eight to fifty-four Front Street, which is also known as the, uh, the Mason's Building. That was constructed in eighteen eighty-two, the historic name is the Abner Greenwood Block. It's now called the Ashland Masonic Lodge. They've been there since eighteen eighty-four. And it's held a variety of businesses on the first floor, but it's been there, I think there was a brief interruption in the twenties, but they've been there ever since. And of course, the Public Library, which has been renovated, but it was renovated in the style of the old library, we just, they built out in the back. And that was an original An- Andrew Carnegie Library that the town matched funds for when he was back giving out money for, for libraries in nineteen oh-three. Historic name of this, of course, is the Railroad House, Captain John Stone's Hotel, built in eighteen thirty-four. It's commonly known now as John Stone, as Stone's Public House. Also one of the oldest buildings in Ashland, and it's been continuously in operation since probably eighteen thirty-four. Uh, diff- at various periods, it's been different establishments over the years. It's no longer a hotel, of course, but it's still a restaurant. And when people say, where do you live? And I say, Ashland. They say, oh, you know Stones? You've been to Stones? I'm like, yep, yep. It's like the local landmark for people who don't know where Ashland is, and they, but they've been to Stones, probably. Uh, the Central Fire Station, and this brings up a point. Um, when people ask us, well, we don't have like a downtown, like say like downtown Lexington or downtown Concord or, or, or Falmouth or something like that, where it's all kind of in the same period style. We have more of a mix, an eclectic mix of different houses, or different buildings, um, from different time periods. This is a good example. Stones is from eighteen thirty, this is from nineteen twenty-three. And it's a good example of what's going on with this building is what we propose, because in a historic district, we're not looking to change. All we're looking to protect is the facade, the outside of the building, what you can see from the street. And this is a good example of it, it's being repurposed as a restaurant, uh, beer garden, what have you, but the outside of the building is staying the same. And the police station next to it, I understand that's gonna be torn down or something like that. We're not including that, it's not old enough to be historic anyways, it was only built in nineteen seventy-eight, so that's not in the inventory. Each of these properties has an appendix in the back, um, and there's more I can, I can send them over to. They're all in the Macris database, which is the Massachusetts Listing of Historical Properties. There's been an inventory done of all these properties that have, gives the history, the architectural style and anything, any, some of the owners of the properties.
So just to be clear, so some of the properties might fall within the map, but they're excluded because.
But they're not historic, they're not excluded, but they're not historic. Because the, the thing is with the historic district, it has to be contiguous.
Right.
You can't go hopscotch across. That's why they have, you have to kinda draw a line around it, and that, that's the district, okay? Um, and so some of them are non-conforming, and that's gonna be like, uh, best example I give is the liquor store. You know, that, that's not a historic building, and, but if that was to be, if this passes and, and, and it, and it he wants to tear it down and build a new building, it would have to be reviewed. Um, the exterior of it would have to be reviewed, not only by the Planning Board and the town, but by the historic, the local Historic District Commission, which will be established just to review it, which there's three, I think I'm coming up to it in the slides, but there's three things, a certificate of appropriateness, um, a certificate of, uh, now I'm, I'm blanking on what it is. There's three different things, hardship, if it's a real hardship to do something, and, uh, I forget what the third one is right now off the top of my head, but, yeah, no, the, the exterior plans, the whole, the whole goal is not to overbuild in downtown Ashland and not to go, um, stuff that is not quite, fits with the general theme of the downtown area. I mean, it's, it's, it's an amorphous, it's obse- subjective.
Which, which, just to, to follow up on that, we don't have a specific theme, right? Each building has its own. So, you know, okay.
So if, so if you wanted to put up, say, something that's, I, I, I'll give the best example, the, the building that went up at one twenty-eight Main. Which a lot of people in town, I mean, I'm getting used to it, but a lot of people in town were horrified that it was like out of place, too big for the space. Not enough, not enough setback, all kinds of different things I've heard, but that's the kind of example that, that the, it would give actually more local control to the citizens of Ashland and just one more layer of having something to say on what gets built downtown. Because the, the local Historic District Commission is gonna be appointed by the Select Board, much in the same way that you appointed the Study Committee. I don't know if you remember that. We had to have like, we had to have people from different walks of life, it's the same thing. The people on the Study Committee now, that committee ends when this goes to the town meeting, and if it passes, then it'll, then it'll have to be created, a new, a new committee.
Create a committee that would.
A commission to like oversee that separate from the, separate from the Ashland.
Guidelines as well as the bylaw to make decisions by.
Yes, yes, I'll get to that.
So it's, so it becomes another layer. So in other words, like one twenty-eight Main had the, they had to go before the Planning Board.
Right. This'll go before the Planning Board too, but it also goes before the Historical Commission.
But I mean, yeah, okay, so the Planning Board could have added to the setback.
Yeah.
So it doesn't, doesn't, I mean, I guess it.
I'm not saying, I mean, I'm, it, it's, that's not neither here nor there at this point.
Yeah, yeah, the other thing is, in terms of it being contiguous, another option would be to choose individual properties, right?
Unfortunately, to do that, you have to have individual, uh, local historic commissions.
Right, you can do it, but you have to.
You have to have a separate commission for each one.
Okay, and, and a question I had, 'cause I, I think this was when I, I sat in on your meet, meeting there a while ago. Um, could, could the same group be the, the, the commission for each of those, right? Cause one of the issues, one of the things that somebody mentioned was, well, you know, you, we, we couldn't possibly have enough people to, I think might have been your consultant, right?
Yeah.
To, to be able to, for individual.
It's kind of un, it's kind of unwieldy. I mean, the, the city of Somerville does it, and I honestly don't know. Um, I have somebody on, Stacy. Stacy, do you wanna weigh in on this, what the problem is with the individual commissions?
Hi, how are you?
Hi, Stacy.
Hi, um, it would be fairly burdensome, the way the district is written is to just, um, with making them contiguous is so it's kind of an altogether sort of thing, it kind of maintains the streetscapes or everything's a similar, you know, the same sort of size and scale and setback that's, it's historically had. Um, you could do the individual ones, um, it would just be I, that's a good que- uh, it's a good question whether you could do it separately and have, um, the same commission serve all of the different, um, individual landmarks. Um, I suppose it's possible. I know Hopkinton has, um, I used to be the chair of the Hopkinton Historic District Commission and we've got the local district, um, you know, just around the common. There is one building, uh, that is a single building historic district. Um, and that one is overseen by the Hopkinton Historic District Commission, um, the downtown one. Um, I think you would need to do, um, to get to that point, you would need to do, have a study committee, like, like the one Jim chaired up. You'd have to do that and have a study report for each of the individual buildings. So it's, um, it's, it's doable, but it would be unwieldy to get to that point. And each, each individual building would have to go, um, to town meeting, just like this district would. So I, I think it's possible, um, but I do, I think it would just be, um, it would be a lot to, to take over, to undertake, for better word.
Cause like my, my concern is that this is encompassing forty-four parcels, which is a huge swath of land. Like Yolanda said, it's not, there's not a set style where we're trying to keep things in the same style, and so.
But that's unique for Ashland too.
Right, but, you know, my concern is that, um, you know, I'm looking at some of these, some of these things in the, in the listing and, you know, you do have, you do have the police department listed in the inventory. But, so I'm saying like if, so if, if.
What is the non-applicable, please?
It just says Macris Inventory Number.
For the police station?
N.A.
Yeah, if, if I can add, the reason, um, uh, for them to be considered, uh, it's included because it's a contiguous parcel. Um, but it wasn't, uh, fifty years of age, so, uh, that's usually the threshold that the National Park Service holds for these, um, regulations, um, and Massachusetts adopted, so, yeah, it's not fifty years old yet.
But it, it falls into the same category of say, one of the banks, like the, the Santander Bank or the, uh, or the Needham Community Bank. So if one of those banks left and they wanted, somebody wanted to redevelop that parcel, then it, then it would fuck, in being inside the historical district, it would fall under the, the, the general rubric of it had to get a little bit of an approval from them as well as the Planning Board.
Okay.
So it's the same, it's the same concept for the liquor store, for the dry cleaners.
Yep.
They're not all gems to be kept forever, you know.
Right, well, and, and to that point, like, there are some parcels in here that I would also consider not gems either, that like, you know, like we, like Lunkers, it says the year was built eighteen thirty-five. I wouldn't necessarily categorize that as something that we would want to retain as a facade. And I would say there are definitely parcels in downtown that we should work to preserve. I absolutely agree. Like, I think the Federated Church and John Stones and the old train station are really unique to Ashland. And I think that is something that we want to make sure we preserve. I, I feel that like, sort of the blanket approach to everything is, is possibly a bit of an overreach. And, you know, we've, we've invested over fifteen million dollars into our downtown, and there's some parcels in here in this list that I just, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily call them like historic to be preserved, I would just call it kind of old, um, so.
There is, there is a, a considerable historic history to that building though. That is the old Ja- Ashland General Store, and it was the newsagent where everybody got their newspaper. And back in the days before, you know, TV and the internet and radio, and people would have to go physically to the news store to get it. That was when, when I first moved to Ashland, it was still a functioning general store. I don't know if you people remember it, but, you know, it's only become Lunkers in the last
Yeah.
so many years. I mean, it's gonna be something else down the line.
Yeah.
You know, but I'm saying, and the actual brick building itself, the front part, it's an addition. You know, and that's not, you know, that's not anything, um, to write home about. But the back, if you look at it from the side, it is, it's one of those Ashland downtown brick buildings, which is very similar to the one that's in front of the Ashland Housing Authority, and it's also very similar to the, the house next to the church, which also used to be a store.
But from the, but from the street, you would be looking at the facade, which would be the front of that.
Right, but what I'm saying is, is Ashland brick, it's, it's an example of Ashland brick construction that they don't do anymore, and it's, it's not, it's something that is historically significant. Whether it doesn't look like it is or not, that's a matter of, you know, that's your personal opinion, right? I got, I got you.
I'm, I'm gonna recommend, if it's okay with the rest of the board, that we let them go through this.
Oh, sure, yep.
Yeah.
Get through this, and then if we.
I mean, it's, you could, you could go over every one of those, I don't think, I, I don't think everything's worth saving either, believe me, we've had a lot of demolition. But this, but this is, this is the vehicle that we're trying to establish to preserve the most amount we can.
Yeah.
Um, if possible.
Right.
Do you know what I'm saying? So it's not gonna be, everything's not, it's not a perfect solution to the problem of preservation. Um, for example, I've got up here the church. Now, right now, it's a church, and it's been a church since eighteen thirty-five. Uh, John Stone actually sold the land to that church. Um, so the, the bit of history there, who knows if it's forever gonna be a church? You know, with, with the congregation, you know, attendance and whether they can afford to keep it. So say somebody, the congregation wants to sell it to a developer, that's the last downtown church we have in Ashland. There used to be, I think, three, and they've disappeared through fire and everything else. Um, that's the quintessential New England downtown church, you know, when, when you go to every New England square, village, across the state, across, across New England, is the town church in the middle of it. Um, so anyway, that's, that's just what I'm saying, but to preserve that, you, you could do an individual thing on each one, then you go back to the argument, individual versus the whole thing. We're trying to, we, we've coupled this together because we wanna try to save as many as possible in one swoop. Um, because it, this is a lot of work. I've been working on this for four years, so it's not something that's easy to accomplish and you know, some people say you can do it and it's gonna encroach, it's like a mold, it's gonna spread, you know, across and start taking around it. No, because each historic district has to go through the whole process all over again, and it has to be vetted. Once it goes through town meeting, and it's, it's gotta pass by two-thirds, it'll then go, if it passes, it then goes to the Attorney General's Office, and they have the final say. The legality of it, I'll get to the, the bylaws and stuff like that, but, um, it, it's been a whole process, okay? And that's kinda what we're doing this for. This is another example, somebody looked at this building and said, oh, this is ugly. Look at it, it's like a vinyl siding on it and blah, 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 blah. That's actually one of the whole oldest buildings in, in Ashland. It's the eighteen fifty Wiggins Block, and that's held numerous historical, uh, things. It's the first, the site of the first Ashland Library, back in the eighteen eighties, it was the Ashland Public Library, and it was an agricultural library um, before the other one was built. And it's had numerous, um, in- incarnations over the years. All right. What?
I just said it might be too late for it.
Yeah, maybe. Historically, this one is called Eber's Pharmacy or Ebber's Pharmacy, now Zen Dental. It's a different example of a different kind of architecture of the drugstore and the nineteen thirty-three architecture of the bricks. And lastly, I think, that's it. What is a local historic district? Local historic district contiguous area, we've already been through this, approval, two-thirds. The district is going to be made up of, the commission will be made up, local residents will be created to oversee the district. And what does it do? Preserves the exterior of historically and architecturally significant buildings, protects the value and character of the downtown. Revitalization, Main Street's an economic revitalization program, and it's more cost-effective program of economic development of any kind in the U.S. today. There's been studies done, rather than, and of course, when it comes to ecological energy and all the costs, that rehabbing old buildings by far outstrips new construction as far as making it quote-unquote eco-friendly. What is it not do? It doesn't say what you can do with the property. So we have no control, or it would have no control of what goes on inside, what kind of business. It doesn't prevent new construction, like I said. Let's say something happened to one of those old buildings and it burned down. A good example is what happened in Hopkington. I don't know if you folks are familiar with the, with the white building across the street from the town hall that burned?
Yeah.
You know, and Stacy's very familiar with it, too. They built that, rebuilt it. It was the owner's idea to rebuild it the same style, but not everything's quite historically accurate, and there was a give and take. And they allowed him to move way back on the property and build additional space and stuff like that, because, you know, he, he was, it was an agreement, and that's what this is going to be. It's going to be an agreement between the town and the, and the developer or the owner to, to make it so it kind of fits in the thing, but we don't have to be like, like, period. Everything has to be done like, according to like how it was done in the eighteen fifties kind of thing. Also, there's been studies shown that it does not decrease property values, and this is, it also applies only to portions of the building that can be seen from the street. So behind the building, it's not the concern of the commission, just what you can see from the street. And that doesn't include inside the building, like somebody looking through the window and see something, that's not, I've had people say, well, what if I have something going on in my, my business? That's no concern of the commission. That's just, it's basically the facade and the outside. Okay. Okay, the district commission made up a local residence, like I said, is responsible for overseeing the bylaw, and the commission's also responsible for establishing a non-binding set of guidelines. We've already, the study committee put together a set of by, of guidelines, which is separate from the bylaw, and the reason for that, according to the state, it's basically, we're not creating this out of whole cloth. We've used other towns' bylaws and other towns' guidelines. The guidelines are to give up anybody who's doing anything in the district, like some, some idea what they, they can do, or what the committee will be favorable to look at what they're doing. And it can be changed much more easily than a bylaw can be changed. The other thing is too, the one we have up, it's up on the website, along with the bylaws in this report. It, it's not final. The final by, guidelines will be done by the new commission, once they're created. This is just a guide to go by it, and like I said, it's been kind of put together from surrounding towns, Sherborne, Hopkington, I think Holliston and Framingham, Medfield, definitely. All right. In summary, historic district creates a thoughtful, community-based review process that protects historically significant buildings from demolition and inappropriate alteration to retain, retain the unique character of downtown Ashland. I have not much, I, I'm just trying to think. I just did this for the planning board last Thursday, so it's kind of, I'm kind of having deja vu all over again here, but I'll take, I'll take any questions, and if anybody from the historical commission who's online wants to say a few things too, by all means, please jump in. What we're looking for tonight, it would be nice to have a vote of confidence or a vote of approval from the select board. I've asked the planning board, they're thinking about it. I'm not asking for a vote tonight, but I would ask that you would, you know, consider approving this and giving us a vote of confidence, so that when we go, and I'm, I'm promoting this all over town, or different things, to say, well, the select board has, has approved it, the planning board has approved it. We don't need it. We don't need it per se to go forward, but it would be nice to have. A lot of people have spent a lot of time working on this, and, I mean, some may say it's overreach. I don't think so. We could have done a lot more. It's not really taking, we, we try to limit it as much as possible. We could have kept going down the street or kept going. The problem with Ashland, which I've said many times, is there's a lot of buildings that are historic, and we're losing them every, every time, every couple of months, there's another one that comes up for demolition. We're losing them, but you can't really do that much with them because they're all spread out. This is an old farm town, so they're in this part of town, that part of town, this part of town. We picked, we picked the downtown area because it was the most contiguously historic buildings together in one spot, rather than try to, you know, we could do individual. The Valentine Estate's a good example. That's, that's by itself. You know, it's an island by itself. You couldn't include that. But, and also I try to keep it, we try to keep it non-residential. The one person who is the resident is, I don't know if you're familiar with Nadine, yeah. Nadine's all for this. And that's the other thing. People ask me, say, well, you're going to tell us what colors to paint the house and stuff like that. I'm like, no, we're not. That's not part of the, the whole thing is to, there's a whole list of things that they will look at in the bylaws, but color of the house, color of the roof, solar panels, all that stuff is not reviewable. Color of the house is not reviewable. It's like, we already have a purple house, you know, and, you know, what are you going to say? It's part of the downtown Ashland now. So, anybody have any questions, any comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So first of all, I just want to say that I have noticed how much work and energy has been put into this, and I just want to say thank you all for that. It, it's been apparent to me, the tremendous amount of work that you've done. So in terms of, to kind of go back to that kind of cherry picking, if, if you can't, if it, if it doesn't make sense to cherry pick, then could you, say in the list, articulate which ones would, wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily consider to be, you know, historic? For example, the police, where's the police station that says N A?
Well, that's, yeah, that's, it's not, it was built in nineteen seventy-eight.
Yeah.
I was told it's being ripped down anyway. I mean, if they're still being, is that still true? Are we still ripping down the police station? Anybody have any idea?
Seems like it might happen, but might not.
There's a potential. We don't know yet.
We don't know, right. So that's why it's kind of, it's there in limbo. But I'll give you a better example, say the, the, what, something that's not, anything that's over, from nineteen fifty and before is reviewable for a demolition delay. Whether it's historical or not is another question. So if it comes before the historic commission, the local historic district commission, they can decide that, no, that's not worth saving. Or if they come to it and say, this building's got so many problems, there's no way we can save it economically, you know, and that would be a hardship kind of case, and it'd be like, okay. You know, hopefully rational people can work together so that the new design for something that would replace it would fit in with the general vibe of the downtown district. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so then there would be oversight on, say there was a fire of a building...
There's oversight on new construction, right, but it's only, it's a, it's called a certificate of appropriateness, and that's what they would be issuing.
So you could today have a building that has no historic value, like the police station, but if you were going to go to put something there, then it would come under this.
If it's in the district, yes.
All right. And then, so you, so you can't really cherry pick. I mean, you can't say these buildings, anything that's in the district has oversight.
Right.
Okay. And then have you talked to, there are some business owners obviously involved here.
Yeah.
Have you gotten any feedback from them?
I've gotten a couple of positive feedbacks. The gentleman who runs the real estate for the, for the Masons was, was positive. I've heard, like I said, from Nadine, people have been really silent. There's been opposition, but it's not from people that actually own things in the business, in, in the area. One person, I think, was, was Bill who owns Ashland Liquors. He was not for this, you know, and that's fine. I mean, that's his, you know, he's like, we should, he wasn't, he wasn't into the concept, period. You know, and that's fine. We had a public hearing, and people got up and expressed their opinions, and, you know, and that's fine, and, you know, some people just don't want government telling them what to do, you know, period. You know, and that's, that's, that's what you're going to get, too. However, it's been, there's been two different rounds of letters that have gone out by the procedure that we had to follow. It's mandated by the state. And honestly, I've never, I've gotten like one call, actually, the gentleman that now runs Zen Dental, he called because he was worried about the solar panels that the town said he could put on there if he ever feels like it on top of the building. And I said, yeah, that wouldn't be affected, you know, and that, that's, so, and he's the only one that called me. I mean, he actually, you know, but other than that, I'm surprised. But then again, we also have government buildings in this, so I'm not going to have anybody from the town calling me. The church, nobody's spoken to me. We have, we have the historian of the church history, whatever, on the commission, and nobody's, you know, said anything. Of course, the Ashland Historical Society is all for this, and, you know, the general public will say, oh, cool, that sounds good, you know, and they're not, you know, as long as it's not their house, we're telling them what to do, they're fine with it, you know, but it's, you know, it's, that's, and there's a reason for that. Nobody wants to be told what to do with their house, but whereas these are, these are more commercial buildings, and there's a lot of town-owned properties.
Yeah.
And that's kind of why we kind of focused on the downtown area, so not to, you know, ruffle too many feathers. But I was surprised by the lack of response, to tell you the truth.
Questions from the board?
The only thing, I, I had watched your, your hearing as well, and I think Mike Kane had a really good, good suggestion was to do more, more of a carrot versus a stick approach.
Well, you know what? I, I agree. I know what you're going to say. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I don't want to jump in.
So, you know, like, we were just talking to CPC.
Exactly.
And my brain was thinking along those lines, like, what kind of carrot could we do to help preserve some of those really special buildings downtown rather than put more restrictions on the build, like, the, the, the business owners that are downtown? Because I, I worry that, like, so my, my fear is that, so say the building owner for Lunkers, like, they go out of business.
Oh, he's not the building owner, though.
Well, so, I'm just saying, so, and the, and the building owner wants to sell that property. And nobody wants to buy that property because they can't make, they can't make any facade changes to that property. So we have potentially vacant parcels.
Well, they, they can make some changes, and they can make, they can make, they all go up for review. So that, yeah, as you're saying, you can't, but that's also, it's also part of the whole, another example I can think of, I haven't seen the final report for the comprehensive plan people.
Right.
But a lot of, a lot of the stuff, a lot of the stuff I've seen lately from that is about the historical preservation of Ashland, and, and people are like answering questions about that. And the feedback I've gotten from that, just informally, it's not scientific or anything, is that, yes, we'd like to preserve the character of Ashland and keep it like small-town Ashland, not like downtown Framingham. You know, I grew up, I grew up in Walpole, and if you ever, have you gone on twenty-seven into Walpole Center lately?
Yeah.
You see that big, huge condo development that's right there? That used to be Fail's Machine Shop, back when I was a kid. And it was...
You can see it here, too.
It's huge, you know, it's totally out of place for downtown Walpole, and that's, you know, I used to walk from junior high past that all the time, but not when it was a condo thing. And that's what we're really trying to get, not say we can't prevent that kind of thing from happening, especially if they come in with forty B, like it's happening with the mill buildings. But that's why, that's the thought behind this.
So let me ask a question. So because like the mill building is forty B.
Yeah.
What would prevent another developer from deciding to just go around all the local regulation and to do a forty B at Lunkers or something along those lines?
Well, hopefully we'll get the affordable housing number up, so that we can, we can, you know, avoid that from...
Absolutely, absolutely, but I'm just, I'm...
Yeah, I know.
We're, I'm trying to wrap my brain around how, how we can do this in a way that is not detrimental to our businesses downtown and reflects, like, the investment we've made into our downtown. It's just, I, I feel like if we partnered with, like, so say, say the Federated Church was looking to sell, I would hope that there would be a discussion with the town about what might happen with that parcel, because I guarantee you the folks at the Federated Church know what an important parcel that is to the community. So I would rather have sort of the carrot approach on how we work with parcels, specific parcels downtown, and maybe it's doing a historic district for the church and for Stones and for the five or six really important buildings that we want to make sure we preserve. I just feel like, I, I, and I, and I get all the work that's gone into this. I, I, and I'm like Claudia, I appreciate all the work that you've done and all the work that the, the commission has done. It's just, I feel like this is, it's, it's, I, I, I think there's going to be unintended consequences from this, and I'm worried about that, so...
Well, they've been in existence in Massachusetts since nineteen seventy-two. There's all kinds of historic, every town around here has a local historic district, and I don't know what the unintended consequences are for those business districts in the downtown. I mean, sometimes a historic district will attract business, not necessarily repel it. The other thing, I agree with you about Mike Kane's suggestion, and that's why I was listening with all ears when the CPC guy was going, we would love to have a fund to get people to be able to apply to it to fix up their house so they don't have to tear it down and start all over again, or something like that. And there have been people who have spent the money to fix their houses, but not everybody can afford that, and you're lucky if they do it the right way, you know, as opposed, I mean, that's, that's basically trust. And somebody new comes in, I mean, it's happened in Hopkington, somebody waited out a demo delay because they didn't want to live in an old house. Well, what did you buy an old house for?
Right.
Basically to sell, to, you know, rip it down and use the lot.
But like, we have a business incentive program, and I know we've done a lot of work with that in downtown. And I'm thinking, like, I'm trying to think of ways that maybe we could supplement the funds for the business incentive program to be able to specifically handle downtown historic projects to help, so if, if, if for, for reason, like, if the folks at Lunkers wanted to do a project to make the facade improved, maybe we could use money from the business incentive program to supplement that, so it stays more in character with the town versus, and, and work with them versus... I just, I just feel like that's a more productive...
I don't think the two are mutually exclusive, though. I think you can do both. And I think, I think also with, with the funding and stuff like that, you can have, what was the example? I just, it just went out of my head a minute ago. You can have, the businesses that we're, we're losing because of the mill building fiasco is, is incredible, the amount of businesses that are in there, and that's going to housing. So on the one hand, we want to attract businesses, and we just lost a whole space for a bunch of businesses, so...
So one of the things with the, with the mill building...
You don't think so, Michael?
So, so one of the things with the mill building, and just to, you know, they, we, we have, we have a choice with the mill building. And we've heard from the town, from people, that it is very important to preserve the historic character of those mill buildings. The developer has said that if they didn't, if, if they wouldn't preserve those buildings, that they could do four, four stories of just housing, we would lose our, any commercial, and we're going to have commercial there, and we would lose the historical, the character of those buildings, which we've heard is important to our communities. So we have been fighting to keep that as part of the project.
Yeah, so would.
So, so, you know, like, would, would I prefer a different project there? Absolutely, absolutely. I would prefer the project that was in front of the planning board that didn't go through, but we can't go back. And, and I, and I get that you want to preserve, like, special places in Ashland, and I think, I just feel like this approach may not, I, I think, I think it's going to have problems at town meeting. This is what I'm, this is what I'm telling you.
Which is why I'm here, trying to promote it, because as we all know, only a certain number of people, registered voters in this town, go to town meeting, you know? And that's why I'm trying to promote it for these people to sit at home and say, hey, it's not the town I grew up in. It's no town is the town you grew up in.
Right.
But if you sit at home and just don't do anything about it, then you have nobody to complain to but yourself.
Right.
And that's kind of why I'm doing this in front of the select board, the planning board, the Lions, this, that, you know, my, two, two ladies down the street. Because this is, it's going to be up to the people at the town meeting.
Absolutely.
Completely, you know?
And I think it should go to town.
And it's hard to get two-thirds to vote on anything. We know that. So it's, it's an uphill battle, but it's worth trying, you know, and that's the whole thing about this whole project is because, I mean, I, I, I'm not married to any of this, you know, I'll live my life one way or the other, you know, I'm not going to live and die on this, but it's kind of like, the Ashland Historical Mission is charged with preserving the architectural and historical features of a town of Ashland. We came up with a plan to try to preserve as many as we could... We came up with a plan to try to preserve as many as we could in one fall fell swoop. Because we're sick of getting these demolition delays and just watching houses go bye, bye. We have an inventory list that's like, this one's gone, that one's gone, this one's gone, you know? And I just worry, you know, there's unintended consequences for everything. I don't know, I don't have a future, you know, I don't have a crystal ball to predict the future, nobody does.
Right.
You know, but I think this is a, personally, I think this is a good way to get the ball rolling, you know? Um, to get preservation in everybody's mind and, you know, possibly save some of these structures before they, you know, go the way of the wrecking ball. You know, I, there's no, there's no, and nothing in what you say is going to prevent businesses from coming to Ashland or, or taking up a space that's already existing. You know, they're not changing anything about the usage of this. You know, it's, I mean, are we creating business blocks and stuff like that downtown? I, I don't know, neither does anybody.
Right.
So it's, it's all kind of up in the air, but this is a way we're trying to fulfill our mission as a, a town commission. And that's kind of what this is all about. Does anybody else want to talk from my commission while I'm here?
Before we get the hand. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Okay, so we're gonna let.
I had a question.
Yeah, we're gonna let the, the two committee in, and then you can close us out, Michael.
Sure.
So either Helen or Joan? Joan, you probably had your hand up first, so go ahead.
I'll go first.
Yeah?
Um, I just wanted to say that, um, I think these, there, I'm, I'm hearing some really good ideas. I also heard, um, I heard Mr. Lad speak, and that was very exciting. Um, I think that there's, I, I think when you talk about the carrot and the stick, yes, there's, there's both. I mean, I think if you don't have, if you don't have a reason for somebody to go that extra mile and look for the, look for the help and look for preserving the buildings, then they're probably not going to. Um, but if you have both, then you have the, have them, have the commission who is going to guide them to get that help, then I think, um, then I think it's a win-win with both the, um, the historic district, preserving the character of the town. And I think, I don't know about you guys, but I mean, I, I love to drive through the town and look, it's, it's just, it's Ashland to me. And, um, I want to keep it that way to a certain extent. I mean, and nobody wants it to preserve, you know, every brick and mortar. But we need to, we need to have the, um, what am I trying to say? New England downtowns, I think, are going by the wayside. And I think that we can do what we can to preserve what we have. Um, but I also think that we're going to be needing your help to, um, get the, um, the help that we need or that the people that are voted onto the, onto a commission, if this goes through, to get the help that they need to help these folks to, um, to preserve their properties. So that's basically where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Joan? Helen, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, Helen Nicole. Um, yeah, I, you know, I really have to say that I do agree with the carrot and the stick. I, I think that's a great thing. We discussed that. It would be wonderful to have incentives. Um, and, and everyone that's previously mentioned that incentives would go hand in hand with this is correct. And, and I'm going to tell you why, um, when you talk about unintended consequences, I feel like there's unintended consequences more if you don't have this protection. I don't really see this as a detriment to businesses. If a business came in, into Lunkers and, and wanted to make changes, they just have to be reviewed. There, there may be some things that, um, they might have to work, work on. But it's not, it's not an exclusion of those changes. It's just a discussion and, you know, and working to keep things in character. But without these protections, and, and, and some of those buildings may not apply. But to the ones that do, and it's important to have it contiguous because of the amount of work and the amount of effort that goes into creating the district, that the loss of that little tiny bit of extra protection that we're going to get could potentially save that church, potentially save John Stones and, and some of those other buildings. And I think that's the unintended consequence of not having this. And if we could put those incentives in place along with this, I think it's a win-win. And, um, you know, and, and I just, I really feel that that's very important. Um, I, and I really would like to stress that there are, as, as was mentioned, there's historic districts in all of these other towns around us. And there's a lot of businesses in those towns, and, and they haven't been affected by this either. Um, and, and I know that these do, these do create, um, areas that are New England. I mean, you're keeping the history, you're keeping the, the look. Um, not all of it, some of it you're still going to lose. Um, but you're keeping as much of it as you can. And that's the intended consequence, which is really important, especially in a town in Ashland. Because the whole rest of the town is changing. And, and to be able to come to that downtown area and that historic village area, at, which is going to be walkable, which is going to be a place where you want people to come. You know, it's going to be a place where people will congregate, hopefully. This all ties into all of that. It, and it's a, and it's a big positive as far as I'm concerned. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Pete. I'd just like to add one more thing, too. Um, I did a, a lot of research into the downtown area, too, because I, I did a walking tour. Um, I don't know if anybody was aware of that back in October, and I had about 30 people, which was a lot for that kind of thing. And we walked to all of the different sites on this. And I had, I have information on every single one of those buildings in there. Um, it, you know, even the liquor store. But, and the interest was, it, it was, it was pretty good, you know? And we've also put together a whole brochure, I don't know if you've seen those, I don't have them with me tonight, um, with, with the Q, the QC, I always call them QC.
QR codes.
QR codes that, um, that you can put your phone up to and you'll get the little blurb history of it, um, of the building while you're walking. The walking, self-guided walking tour. So the historical commission is trying to promote generally that. And the one thing that Helen just said, too, reminds me, it might be easy to preserve something if there's already something there in saying, okay, you got to work with us to preserve this. We just can't come in and say, we're just going to rip it down, you know? Whether that happens or whatever happens, um, it's just one more, it's one more sense of citizen control over the development process in the downtown district. That's all, in the downtown district, that's it. We don't, you know, nothing else is concerned. So, I mean, there's pluses and minuses, and everybody's got their opinions. Michael, did you have a question?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, actually, just a couple, couple of things. I think first of all, um, I think other people have recognized that the work that you've put into this, you know, as the commission, and, and I would just add my voice to that. I mean, folks have been working long and hard on this and just preservation in general. And, uh, I think it's appreciated. I think, um, and I think, you know, the intent is certainly noble and, and probably supported. The discussion about like the businesses in the mill building, that's probably a separate discussion that we could have.
The ship has sailed on that one anyway, so.
Yeah, I, I think there's some important points, though, that, that could be kind of fleshed out there. Um, so I think a couple of things, like the whole carrot and the stick idea, I think that's, that's great. I think, you know, the carrot approach has some legal hurdles to get through as well as some operational hurdles. Um, and I think, you know, that's something that have, would have to be contemplated, right? Certainly not impossible, it's something that, that, you know, we'd have to kind of think through. But, um, one question I had is, you know, I was just thinking about this. If you think about what you're trying to accomplish, could you potentially do it just through traditional zoning? And just, you don't think so?
No, no, I've checked with the state on that. This is the, this is the only, traditional zoning doesn't prevent that because things can be overridden. Um, we've, we've looked into that in the study committee and I've, Stacy, can you?
Yeah, Stacy, you might have some.
You might have some more information on this.
Stacy's excellent, by the way.
Stacy has been doing this for years in the engineering, and she's currently working in the town of Dedham right now. And they're our first district to sort out that whole, I don't know if you've seen the first district of Dedham.
No, no.
It's all behind where the courthouse is, it's all the old, original.
It's a, that's a, Dedham's a whole other level.
Yeah, Dedham's a whole other level than Ashland.
Level, level, level.
This is, uh, what, um, uh, the study committee here in Ashland's been proposing and talking about is, you know, several levels below, there's far, far more control in Dedham. Um, one of the things, um, yeah, zoning can handle some of the setback issues and kind of the size and the streetscape. Um, what it won't do is kind of preserve the historic fabric. So you could still have something, um, that's the same size and setback, but, you know, and look historic-ish. But you won't have the actual, um, buildings. Uh, because I know, like you said, it gets a little sticky because you get spot zoning and that's, um, you know, it gets a little weird with that, but.
Gotcha, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I was thinking, you know, so we have a form-based code right now that kind of has for, you know, the, the downtown areas which it affects, they have design standards. Pretty specific, but there are options, like, you know, bandsard roof versus gable roof. I mean, you can choose one of the two, but it has to be one of the two. And I was just wondering if you could accomplish the same thing with zoning. The thing is, like, oh, it's so currently, like, our form-based code is, um, it's not required. So it's a, it's an option that a developer could utilize. Um, if they wanted to, they get, they get some incentives for that, you know, for meeting that form-based code. But, yeah, I just didn't know if you could, you know, maybe in this potential district, instead of doing a local historic district, do like an overlay zone that had different requirements for the looks. But the, but to your point, I think it wouldn't stop somebody from going in and tearing it down and then rebuilding it using the same standards. So I just answered my own question. Thanks for helping me walk through that.
Yeah, there's also, um, there was something called, um, uh, it's called like a neighborhood conservation area, um, that some towns that have had, um, I know Air was looking at one. You know, a, a lot of their, they have a very historic downtown and, but at the same time, it's also got a lot of vinyl siding. It's got a lot of things that have changed, but the scale, the buildings themselves are all still there, they've just altered over time. Um, and the state, uh, in talking with the Massachusetts Historical Commission, that, um, neighborhood conservation districts like that, which are less, they're kind of, I, I see them kind of, kind of the midpoint between what you're saying with the zoning and local, local historic district. Those are, right now, are kind of working themselves through the courts. So, um, as to the, I guess, legality of how it all applies. So, um, the state, Massachusetts Historical Commission has not been recommending those just because it's, um, it's not sorted out already.
Not vetted, really.
Whereas the local, the local historic districts have had decades to get themselves sorted out.
One other thing I would just add to, I'm sorry, is, is that it, Michael?
No, that was it.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks again for all your work on it.
Yeah, just one quick thing, though. But, um, we, I would, no matter what happens, it's a separate issue, it's the carrot issue. And we'd love to like talk about the CPC funds, because we're, we're looking into that, too, for the cemetery, which would be part, the cemetery behind the Federated Church, which is a whole separate issue, which we're fixing up. Helen's point and Joan's point on that. That's, we could start a separate group for that, or we could do like someone said, we'd, a, a, a entity within the, the Historic Commission to be able to administer funds to people who want to fix up their properties. And that's, that's always been a stumbling block with some of these people that come in to me, and it's like, I'd like to preserve this, I don't have any money. Um, there's a guy on Olive Street, I've told the story before, bought the house. It's, he's got five acres, he loves it, it's an old colonial, it's, but it's leaky as a sieve. And he can't afford to keep the thermostat up high in the winter and his girlfriend won't live there with him. But he doesn't want to sell it. And it's like, you know, it's like, he's like, you know, I got his trucks parked there. He'd love to fix it up, you know? They'd love, and I don't have, I didn't have anywhere to send him to get grants or something like that to, um, you know, to help him fix up his house. So we'd like to get back to that, too, in a separate issue with you folks. And also with the his, with the cemetery, um, if it does become, if this does become part of, of the district, um, it would qualify for matching grants for, for different, um, groups as, as being included within the historic district. So there's all of that. So I think that's it for me. Thank you very much for listening. Sure.
They might have missed this. Um, how would you, so say it passes, how do you interact with the planning board process? Like, so right now, if you have to go to site plan, you're, you're often going to design review, which is looking at the aesthetic. So do you?
I believe it goes to the historic district first.
But then still design review?
Then design, Stacy, can you elucidate? Thank you.
Yeah, it still will go through design review. Um, at least when I was, uh, I, I did check on this, um, whether there was a prescribed kind of order of operations of who gets to see what first, you know, what designs first. And unfortunately, Massachusetts, there is not. I know, um, when, I, I used to be the chairfist in Hoppington, and the way we would work it is, um, oftentimes, it, there was a, a kind of a middle ground where someone would have something that would meet the, you know, the design review standards that also kind of, you know, especially signage, that was something that we saw a lot of overlap with. And, uh, we found it was actually fairly easy, um, you know, if they were designing something that fit, um, you know, no backlit illuminated signs, similar sorts of, uh, issues would, uh, would, were typically asked, you know, that were typical concerns of the historic district commission as they were of the local signage and that. But yet there's no prescribed order of operations, so.
Thank you.
And what we're doing is getting you the, um, the warrant together. It'll be, it's taken out of this, the bylaw is in this, this document. Um, and that, that's basically boilerplate that's been court-tested kind of thing. Um, that's going to be on the warrant as, as well as the appendix, which shows the actual properties. So that should be in before the 28th. I know Joan asked you for a place.
As you said, Jim, I don't think we're in a position to vote, we don't.
No, and I'm not asking you to tonight. So if you want to discuss it later or whatever, it's fine. Um, I, I'm going to be, um, doing my thing, trying to promote this as much as possible. So if anybody has any suggestions of who I could speak to, um, I, I, I have no life, so I can go anywhere and speak. And, you know, my kids are all grown, so it's, you know.
One other quick question, super quick. You had mentioned that other, other towns have downtown historic districts.
Yeah.
Um, we were talking about Hoppington, what other towns locally have?
Natick.
Natick.
Natick has many, Sherborne, Medfield, Framingham. Uh, Holliston doesn't quite have historic districts, they have his, those are more unofficial. There, there's, I, I believe, Stacy, are those more like the sign we have already? You're entering the historic district of Ashland?
Yeah, it's more a, it's more a.
Unofficial?
Unofficial, yeah.
Yeah, it's unofficial, so. But, but there's, there's a whole listing, you could just Google historic districts in Massachusetts, there's quite a few. I mean, the city of Boston, city of Boston has whole neighborhoods, more than like Beacon Hill, South End.
And they.
They're all, you know.
They vary in, um, levels of partic, uh, details. You know, for example, uh, downtown Dedham, I think even does paint color, like, they're all in.
And do, are there bylaws and their guidelines online to take a look at?
Oh, ours are online.
I know ours are, but these other communities.
Yes, yes, that's where we got them from.
And towns have different approaches. And actually, and I, um, if, if things like, um, paint color or that sort of thing, that needs to be in the bylaws. Actually, in the bylaw that, uh, uh, we've written up, uh, for, to go on the warrant, it ex, it lists the things that are excluded, and that's paint, um, replacing, you know, asphalt shingles with asphalt shingles. They don't care what color, asphalt shingles, um, that sort of thing. Um, but yeah, different, and guidelines will keep evolving, that's why they're not a part of the warrant. Um, guidelines are starting to include things like heat pumps and, um, electric vehicle chargers, things that were not thought of in 1972. So, um, that's why the, the guidelines are, are separate, because they continue to evolve. You don't want to have to go through the whole process again as, as technology comes and finds us.
Great, okay. Well, Jim, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you to your commission for your work.
Hope you're not here all night, so I'm sorry, I took so much time.
No, that's okay.
No, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, wonderful. Uh, moving on, reviewing the renderings for the Warren barn. We have pictures of what it used to look like. And then there's pictures of the renderings, I think. Nice to see they were pretty close. Yep, those are the pics of it, yep. These are the photos that we took, um, in 2019, uh, before, um, the barn had to come down. Sort of the best we have there. I mean, there's some pretty pictures that are, but this has kind of all of the angles that I wanted to just sort of make sure, um, we were showing here. And then I can show you, I think, um, obviously, we're working with the, uh, Framingham State University and the Warren Conference Center to, um, reconstruct the barn. Uh, initially, we had hoped, we were working just to have the shell reconstructed in partnership with, uh, Framingham State. They would like to be able to use the barn, and so it's a bit, it's a little bit different. Um, and so we've talked about this, I think, previously. And so this, they're really at the beginning stages of, um, designing the barn. But as we've learned through our construction processes, you know, once you get past design development, there's not a whole heck of a lot you can really change. And so I just wanted to have this conversation one more time before we sort of start going down there, start to do more programming and really delve into the real design, um, of the building, making sure if anyone has any concerns that this isn't meeting sort of our objective of elevation as well, that it's not replicating the barn as best we can and still making it useful. I just wanted to sort of have that here before we moved a little bit further in the process.
I mean, what I, real quick, what I see is certainly this is a more enclosed building. If you look at the pictures from the actual barn, if you look at the back, there's that whole level that was open to the back. So I think that for me, some of the, the elevations that I looked at was the side elevation that showed, that sort of matches number, the old picture three. So I think that is a good depiction of the side elevation and what the side elevation looked like. I think the other side elevation is a little bit different because it looks flat versus, I don't know, maybe that's the back.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the, it's like we have the back and then we have the, the left side, but we don't have the right side, right? So that, or depending on how you're thinking about, so as, as you look at the silo in the barn, right, we have a pretty good picture of the side and the back. What about the other side? What does that look like? Does it match this side? Because that's not what it was. Am I making, I don't know if I'm.
No, you are making.
Right, so that's from the back. I think, again, it's a little bit different, but that's because it was open and it was an old barn. I think this looks pretty close to it.
It has another, um, set of sliders on that other side.
Looks a little bit like this side, yeah, looks a little bit.
Okay, right, so like the others, so it's the other side of the building that I'm, you know, wondering what that looks like and how it, and how it hits the silo and, and things like that, that we're not seeing and we don't have a rendering of. I mean, I think they're going in the right direction.
What, one of the ones that you had sent me, right, had, did show.
Yeah, I'm going to see if I can.
Has it had the sliding doors open? Remember that?
That was in the presentation when they had like the three, I think we presented it, that one at the last meeting.
That part, as you look at the picture that you can see, the left-hand part that kind of is built into the hillside there, which really replicates very much the previous.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Structure. Um, that also is where the, um, bathroom facilities would be to be, that would be utilized, um, even by the skating, people at the skating rink.
Right.
And then on this side of it too is where Henry's place is.
Mm-hmm.
So it's very close to Henry's place.
Right, right.
You know, the one thing that I had raised to Jen when she forwarded me the, um, the photos, and that was just that I wanted to be careful to have all those sliding doors because we do want it to be useful now.
Correct.
Not necessarily for seasons at this point in time, but that, um, you know, we don't want to, those sort of doors, um, if that's all you have to use, seems to me to be like it might really limit any future, um, oops. And then the other thing, um, is I wonder too.
I hear what you're saying, yeah.
What sort of wear and tear goes, you know, it feels to me like that when I was growing up, barns that I saw, the slider was always open or partially open.
Right, right.
Probably because I couldn't close it. Now, I mean, obviously this is 2025 and it's a different world and different. But I just wanted to be careful.
And I did relay that actually to the group already. They were going to look at it, he was going to send that to the designers sort of think about, you know, in terms of durability and, you know, we're talking about the lease.
Functionality, right?
Yeah, and how long.
Yeah.
Going to have to maintain it. So I did find, this is from, this one isn't as, quite as clean. This is sort of the initial iteration that we discussed, but so this is, um, the east elevation. And then I think you'll want to, this is the one you were probably, this is going to be the west.
But that doesn't have the slider on it. The one above it, wouldn't it maybe be that? Yeah, because.
The silo is going to, you can see, it's like, it's.
Yeah, vaguely, yeah, okay, I see, yeah.
Yeah, so this project, obviously, the silo is existing and so they're designing and it's just an existing.
Right, okay, so I see what you're saying, Claudia. So instead of having, so the only real door that we're seeing in this.
Is a little tiny one on the other side.
Is one door on the one side, right? So there's no doors at the front.
Right.
Right, and then there's one and then we see multiple sliders all the way around the building, which even in the initial, right, there was, if you look at picture two, the barn extended past the silo and there was a single door that you could access the building from. Um, and it looks like there was also one, maybe on the, yeah, so I think to Claudia's point, I think sliding doors are, are in some barns, but that's not all the doors they have in the barn, so.
Yeah, and there is that one on that other side that is a, a door, but I just thought maybe another door or something a little bit, you know, I'm not saying get rid of the sliding doors because I think it isn't, they are important. Saying I think we might want to just make sure we had some additional.
Ways of getting in the, in the building.
Yeah, that might be more useful that you would use.
Right.
You know, for, if you were, if you were trying to maintain, you know, say you did have a function there and it was fall and theoretically it should be 70 degrees outside, but it's not.
Right.
Then maybe you, you want to be able to clo, keep those closed as opposed to open. But, uh, you know, again, I, I just, um, didn't want to.
Right.
Derail the project by any stretch of the imagination because I really appreciate the partnership with Framingham State.
Oh, of course.
And the other thing, but ultimately we want it to be useful.
Well, and, and, I mean, I'm looking at the size of these sliding doors, especially at the very back of the building. Those are big doors.
Yeah, well, they're sliding barn doors, right? I mean, those are, you got to think about, there's a horse going through there, right?
No, I, I understand that. I'm like, you have those big doors and then you have another sliding door on the side, another sliding door on the other side. I mean, unless they're thinking something's going to go through it from side to side, I don't, you know.
Well, I think they're, I think they've sort of, uh, thought about sort of this open air kind of.
Right.
Uh, where they would open all the doors and so, and then use the patio, I think.
I see, yes.
For the, um, ice rink, that you could have an event that was a little bit more open or maybe you're going to have a movie night and you're going to open the doors and there's like some protection.
Okay.
You know, so they, I think that's one of the reasons. They're trying to make the, it's a pretty small space in terms of like what they'll be able to do in there, I think. So I think they're just trying to make it as versatile as possible. So I think with the doors, again, I think this won't be a full, when they use it in the winter, it's really just for the bathrooms.
Right.
The actual function space will never be.
At least for now.
It's not going to be used.
Right.
So they're sort of trying to get the most they can.
I would recommend that they look at their house, right? Cause they have the house and the, it's not really a barn, but it's sort of a barn. I don't know, that might be an idea. Now granted, they have more glass all the way around, so it's a little bit different, but, um, yeah.
From a footprint size, like it, it's, it's the same basic foot. Yeah, okay, I just wanted to like.
Pretty close, as much as we, I mean.
As much as we can.
They're making it, yes, stay the same footprint.
Gotcha.
And I, I think it's really a, a nice design, nice replica of.
Yes.
I like the, I like the design.
Yeah.
I think it's great.
Yeah. Uh, that was my only input was the, thinking about it.
No, I think, I mean, like I said, I, you know, looking at it, it looks like it's going to fit in based, you know, the, the vision that people had of replicating the barn. So that's the important thing, but just from a functionality and cost perspective, I would just say double, you know, just take another look at the, the, the not have, that only having one regular door would be an issue.
Yep, I will.
Okay. But otherwise, nice, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jen.
Appreciate that. Okay. Who knows, we talk so much about a barn. Okay. Uh, next is to discuss and open the BAA grant and select board grant applications process with submission due by March 28th, 2025. Any discussion on that? Okay, otherwise, if I could get a motion to open the BAA grant and select board grant application, submission due by March 28th, 2025.
So moved.
And a second. Uh, all those in favor? Aye. The other process of this is determining who's going to review the grants. I don't know, Claudia and Brandy, are you open to doing that again or?
I'm good.
Okay. We don't have to add that to the motion, but if you guys want to be our subcommittee, that'd be great. Thank you very much. Town meeting warrant is open and notice of intent for a warrant article is due by February 28th, 2025. So if you would like to do a warrant, um, that is due by February 28th, which is a week from Friday, believe it or not. Yes, yeah, yeah. Okay, um, moving on, discuss the BAA runners breakfast and funding. So, um, typically we do the BAA runners breakfast the Saturday of weekend of Patriots weekend. And the marathon is Monday and we typically do it Saturday. It has been brought up that it is Easter weekend, but I'm thinking, uh, we really can't do much different. I mean, people who are running are going to be in town.
They're going to be here anyway.
Right, so.
You know, so I, I mean, if you're running, because you've got to pick up your stuff.
Right.
So I don't really see the point in moving it unless other folks feel differently. But even still, I think logistically, it's probably the date that makes sense.
Right, right. I mean, I, I would, I would think the same. So, um, I know it is the beginning of April school vacation, but it's always been the weekend.
But that's always.
It always starts April school vacation, so.
That's what it is.
Because it's Patriots Day, so. Um, so the day we are looking at is April night, Saturday, April 19th. So if that's good with people. And then we need to discuss and vote funding. We typically do Susan up to a thousand, up to 1,500.
Up to a thousand is fine.
Up to a thousand from the select men's gift account. That's good. If I get a motion to do the runners breakfast on April 19th with funding not to exceed $1,000 from the select board gift account.
So moved.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so Susan will get that sent out for us.
It'll be at TJ's.
It'll be at TJ's. We typically start at nine. It, you know, goes from like nine to 10:30 and, yep, okay. I'll be celebrating my anniversary with all of you. Over some eggs and grits. Well, I won't have the grits, but anyway. The next one is discussing, uh, we usually have an annual volunteer breakfast. We're looking at a tentative date of March 22nd. And we've already started discussing it with Susan. Again, just a reminder, this is for all boards and committees that we appoint, as well as other volunteer boards in town. It's an opportunity to bring everybody together. We typically do it at the community center. It's typically, um, catered by TJ's, they do a really nice job. Uh, we as the select board are the sponsors and the supporters. So typically we have to get there a little bit early, make sure things gets it up, stuff like that. And there was discuss, there's been discussion about how we can increase our volunteers, right? We have a number of committees that need people for it. So one of the things I suggested to Susan in chatting with a few people is two things. One is have Susan invite people who have submitted talent bank forms in the last six to eight months, who have not been appointed to a committee. Invite them to come and as part of the breakfast and celebration, it would be to also talk about what it means to volunteer. We could ask people from different committees to talk about what their committee does and the, 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 this sense of good and pride that you get from volunteering. The other possibility was if you are attending as a volunteer and you know someone who maybe hasn't filled out a talent bank form, but would like to know what it likes, is to volunteer, allow them to, you know, bring a potential volunteer with them. So those are two options that I'm offering as sort of increasing who we invite, to sort of increase our volunteer pool.
It seems to me last year was pretty full.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, is it, do we have a space and?
I think the capacity for that room is over 100 and we've never, I mean.
Okay.
We've never had that, at least I think that's the case. Yeah, so I think we could certainly have more people. We, we typically get about 60 or so people. I don't know that we'll get a lot more who, you know, we typically not all the volunteers who are on boards can come. Um, so I think.
No, it's a nice idea.
Yeah, so if people are okay with that, um, Susan is willing to get invitations out and also out to people who have submitted talent bank forms. Okay, so we're going to go with the March 22nd date. And then we should also discuss funding for that. That also typically comes from the select board gift account. I think we probably want to do a little bit more, maybe up to 1,500. And then as long as our numbers don't rise too much, and we typically ask for people to RSVP, so. Does that sound right, Susan, about 1,500 for the breakfast?
Yeah, last year it was 700, so I think.
Okay.
Definitely won't go over 1,500.
So if I can get a motion to discuss, to have the volunteer breakfast on the 22nd with those two additional invites and with funding from the select board gift account not to exceed 1,500. Hey.
Hey, that, that's the point.
If, if, that's the point. If they want to come and have some food with us and understand.
Yeah, we'll, we'll gladly take them.
If I can get a motion.
Uh, so moved.
And a second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And on the note of volunteers, if those of you that are still hanging out here, we are looking for two seats on our community preservation committee. Um, one is the housing authority member, so I'll talk to affordable housing. The other is a select board attend, appointment because that's an at-large seat. Conservation commission has an open seat. Council on Aging has three seats, but we're going to invite them. I had a request, I think we might have all been copied, I'm not sure, to reduce their number. They currently have a committee of nine for council on aging and they'd like to be reduced down to seven. So I've been, um, I'm going to be inviting, I believe it's now Donna, who is the vice chair, since Fran Blake has stepped down, it's between Donna and Steve Mitchell, to sort of come and talk to us about why they want to do that. I think we've had that from other commissions where nine people on a committee is sometimes tough to. Are you throwing things at me or?
No.
Oh, okay.
Just trying to.
Okay.
Madame Chair, I'd like to find, I'd ju, I'd just like to hear like why.
Yes, and so I'm going to invite her to our first meeting in March to, to do that. And she's open to that. Uh, Open Space and Rec has a seat, Stormwater Advisory has a seat, Sustainability Committee has a seat and Design Review has a seat, but that is a planning board appointee. So we, you know, again, if you're interested, but we don't do that. Couple other reminders, March 1st, the electronics can be dropped off at DPW from 9:00 AM to noon for nominal fee. Uh, winter parking ban, no on-street parking from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. That continues through March 31st. Textile clothing recycling, you have to schedule it yourself with Simple Recycling, simplerecycling.com. And another, it's not on here, but, um, papers are available if you'd like to run for an open seat here in town. You can go to the town clerk's office or check it out on the website. Are you dropping your phone because you had something to add to this discussion? Oh.
No, no, I was actually just thinking about the paper.
Oh. Completely different thing, okay, great.
Papers are due April 1st?
April, not until April 1st? You sure, not March 1st?
April 1st.
April 1st?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So if you want to run, there's, you can go to the town website to see all the seats that are open, two on the select board, two on the school committee, two on planning board, board of health, probably library trustees, I don't know all of them, so check it out, town, on the town website. And if you want to run, go ahead and, uh, grab some papers and get some signatures. More the merrier. Okay. That is up to their town managers' report.
Thank you, and I'll be, um, relatively brief. Uh, so FY '25 budget update, so that's our current fiscal year. So, um, I did talk to Brittany a little bit earlier and so she'll be sending out the quarterly, uh, financial update to, to everybody, just so you can kind of see where we are, uh, financial update to, to everybody, just so you can kind of see where we are, budget to actuals. You know, nothing, uh, that I've been alerted to, you know, of any, you know, particular issues this year. Um, I, it's going to be really interesting to see the snow and ice budget. Dougie does not, uh, he does not hold back. Um, I mean, the roads in Ashland are great.
Yep.
There is a cost associated to that, so.
Yep, that's okay.
Um, so we shall see how that goes. But, you know, the other thing is I just want to remind you, um, especially as we, you know, kind of head into our, we'll have one meeting right before our tri-board meeting. No, actually, we won't.
No.
Um, so just, you know, as you recall, uh, we did, we were utilizing a pretty hefty amount of one-time funds to balance FY25. Um, and as the year went on, we got, um, we ended up getting a, a lot more investment income in motor vehicle excise tax than what we had anticipated. So just as a reminder, we're not having to use as much in one-time funds this year as we thought we would, so. You, use that information as you feel appropriate.
Okay.
Um, so federal grants update, uh, well Claudia, you, you kind of caused me to spill beans. So one thing is, um. So I've been trying to look at, you know, is there a way I can put like some consolidated information? Like we talked about at our last meeting, you know, just like a consolidated list of different grants and stuff. Is, there's, uh, there's so much confusion and, um. Dysfunction, I, I think, uh, just kind of going on around different, uh, you know, some of these different funding streams and different agencies. So it's really hard to do that. I did get some good news that, uh, we did find out from the state that the six hundred and five thousand dollars for the U C C property purchase was secured. So the state does have those money, that, that funding, so that would be good. We have to do a few things just to satisfy some requirements in order to get the reimbursed, you know, to be, to get that six hundred and five thousand, but. So far. I know. It could be, yeah. We, we shall see. Three point two, three point two-five million dollars, significant amount of money that we weren't expecting. And that's a good, those are always good things. When you're not expecting millions of dollars and it comes, you know, there's a lot of things. So, uh, unfortunately. Yeah, that's, uh, there, there's a consequence there. Um, and then one thing I did not have on the agenda, um, but I just did want to make everybody watching aware. I did send you folks an email late last night. So, we did get the application for the second 40B project on Waverly Street. The interesting thing is it's a different developer. The design is different, same amount of units, the design is different. I went back and looked a little bit more through the application. I was like, so wait, how did, we, we heard nothing about this change in developer or the change in plans or anything?
How does that work with Mass Housing?
That was my question. So they actually have a letter from Mass Housing that's, uh, like an approval later, like a transfer, an approval. There was one thing in their Mass Housing letter that, you know, said notifying the town, you know, about our, Mass Housing was notifying the town about it. We, this was, that letter was dated December 10th, I, we did not receive anything.
We didn't receive anything about a change of ownership.
I'm a little confused, um, so what, the, just, uh, just humor me for a moment. So there's been a change of developer and a change of plans, but that they weren't required to notify us of any of that as long as they just went through Mass Housing, uh, like, I'm just unclear on the process.
Yeah, so Makita, so if you're doing a 40B project, um, a developer first needs to submit an application to, um, what they call a subsidizing agency. In this case, it's Mass Housing.
Right.
Basically, they submit their pro forma and their plans and everything.
Can I pause you? Could I, uh, motion to go past 10 o'clock?
Uh, seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, that's okay. Um, it's a, it's a good, it's like the two-minute warning.
Mm-hmm.
You know, kind of to let you know, um, it's late. But, um.
No, yeah, I'm just, yeah, just, I just, because there's a change. Yeah, I just didn't know if the, if, that, what, what the procedure was, if there is a change in developer, change in design, there's no requirement to. There's no requirement to circle back to the town, like, there's no, to notify the town.
I don't want to say that there isn't, I do want to say that we weren't notified. So I don't know if somebody dropped the ball, I don't know.
That's, that's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to.
I even wondered.
How, how that works, I mean.
But, yeah.
Because i, is it a deal between the two developers or, you know, I think it's Mr. Hickey's property? Was he involved again? How, how does that all work?
Yeah, um, you know, w, we will upload the, the information shortly up to the, um, up to the website. I can actually forward it to you as well, so you don't have to wait.
And they've now submitted, but you mentioned that they might be willing to pot, you know, like, put a pause before we start the process. Because does the Z B A have the capacity to be doing two 40B projects at the same time?
I'd.
We'll have to work with the chair, and what we were hoping to do is sort of have these, you know, focus each month.
Right.
Have a monthly meeting. We sort of talked about as you get closer, you may have to do additional meetings. Um, they may need to sort of, may need to open it, sort of do the first, um, presentation of the project and then stagger them, so it would be every other week. But yeah, it's going to be a big lift for them.
Because they did say that, like, they had one meeting in January, but they're going to have, I, and they had one in February, but as of March, they were going to have to be doing two a month for just the mill project to be able to do it within the timeline that they have, right? Because they have hundred and eighty days that they have to finish the processing?
Yeah, without, without.
Without it, without there being either, you know, penalty or, or some kind of.
Or they can continue, the applicant can continue.
Yeah, yeah, if the applicant is willing, okay.
So, y, your bottom line is, no, we don't have the capacity to do it, but it's a 40B project, they don't care.
Right.
That's, I mean, that's one thing I think there really does need to be looked at, at the state level. I'm not going to go off on too much of a tangent right now. But, um, yeah, but anyway, I just want to let everybody know that that has been filed.
Yeah, I certainly don't think they're going to let us put it, push it off to be in a good place with it. They had sort of made that pretty clear.
Right, they'll put, let us push it maybe a little bit, but not, they're not going to wait until the other project's done.
Or even halfway, yeah.
Okay.
Well, if we found, find out that there should have been some sort of notification, or, I mean, and even if we don't find that out, or there wasn't supposed to have been some sort of notification, can we still raise it with Mass Housing? That we don't have the capacity to be doing? I mean, come on, th, 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 this is Volunteer Board, it's not, you know.
I get it, yeah, I totally agree. It's so frustrating, it really is frustrating.
Both Peter and Alvaro had reached out several times to who we thought was the developer based on the Mass Housing question. Many times, um, you know, we're sort of trying to. Think like, how many times are you going to reach out because you want to.
You don't want to encourage them.
You don't want to encourage it, but you were trying to figure out the timeline. So we were pretty, uh, taken aback when.
Right.
Sort of showed up without notice. Like, you know, we sort of had heard that the mill building was going to come in the next, you know, couple of weeks. And so we were preparing here, it, it was really out of nowhere.
Yeah. And you would think that the developer that was receiving the notifications either could have said something to the new developer saying, hey, the town is wanting to know what's going on, or they could have let us know and said, hey, we are no longer the developer. So you'll be hearing from this other organization, so that's disappointing.
Well, yeah, that's the other thing, right? I'm sorry, it's just like, but like, you would think that they'd be required to notify, you know, if there's, it just doesn't, I don't know, this just seems, doesn't, I'm very confused.
And, yeah, and I, and I will say, again, I'll be brief, like, usually, you know, in my experience, um, developers do reach out to the town and just say, hey, you know, this is kind of what we're planning, this is what we're thinking. I didn't even, I, yeah, I mean, I had to look up who this developer was.
Wow. Thank you for that update, a little disappointing, but thank you. Okay, let's go to board reports, Makita.
Uh, yep, so, um, let's see, there was a Boards and Committee Review Subcommittee Meeting. Uh, we are still talking through the current process and speaking to different stakeholders about it. Um, we are getting close to, to documenting the cur, the current process and getting input and feedback. We do have another meeting that we'll be planning and posting the agenda for shortly. Um, but, um, after that, we're hoping to, um, to, to, to get some more work done a little bit more quickly on this. So, uh, updates forthcoming. I also had a chance to attend part of the Open Space and Recreation Committee, uh, Public Forum, uh, meeting on Saturday, last Saturday, I think it was. Um, so that, that was, that was great. I do have a question, Madam Chair. We talked last time about, uh, sl, possibly getting some more Select Board Office Hours on the calendar. I know our calendar is getting pretty full, but I was just wondering if that's something that we're still thinking that we could do, um, this spring.
I think it's something we need to look at. I also would ask maybe Brandy if you want to reach out to the farmer's market, because I know they're going to start doing their summer's schedule. Um, yeah, you know, I, one of the things that we have done is at the book sale at the library.
Yep.
It's the first Saturday of the month, the next two first Saturdays, we are in tri-board meetings, so that's not going to work.
Yeah.
Um, so we might want to look at other days or other locations. I think, you know, if people have ideas, we can do scheduling via email. So if people have ideas, you know, maybe there's an event or something that's going on and you say, oh, it might be good to do it at this time, shoot that and see who's available. Like I said, scheduling is allowed to be done via email.
Okay.
From that perspective.
Okay.
Um, so we can go from there and then we should probably start looking at our, you know, people's summer schedules and what we can do. So we can go from there. But yeah, I, we do need to start looking at having office hours again.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Oh, one more thing, thanks D P W for keeping our roads awesome. I just want to shout that out, because I had to drive, do some driving around in this weather for the past few days. And I got to say, like, hitting Ashland coming home, it was smooth sailing, like.
Nice.
Sadly, I can't say that, well, I'm not going to drag other communities.
We won't call out the other communities.
I'm just going to say how proud I am of, of Ashland and our D P W's efforts of, uh, keeping us, uh, safe, so.
Good.
Yep.
Great. Claudia?
So I have attended a few meetings of late, so we did have the Z B A hearing for the traffic study, uh, information for, uh, 10 to 60 Main, and that was on February 11th, I think. And now March 11th will be the next one. I think that's going to be, the topic will be civil engineering. And, and traffic again.
And fa, and a little bit of follow-up of traffic, yeah.
Yeah, I did ask, actually, request, um, I, I had forwarded some questions after the first time, first meeting, and then again at, at this last meeting, because I don't think my questions made it through to the, um, Z B A, um, a, around traffic and safety. And then I did also attend, um, the traffic study.
Traffic Safety Committee.
Thanks, Joe, Traffic Safety Committee. And did ask that they put a camera down Pleasant Street and get some of that information, because that has been missing. Um, so, um, I did talk to Alvaro tonight about following up about that, because I think it, it's, you know, it should be part of the traffic study. And then, um, the, the history, well, the, we heard from the Historical Commission, that was an excellent meeting. There was a lot of good feedback. I too really actually, um, Brandy, I was happy that you brought up Mike Kane's kind of carrot and the stick. That was very, um, it was, you know, positive spin on how to, maybe how to do things, some things. I did attend the School Committee Budget Meeting, um, a couple of Saturdays ago. And, uh, the focus was really, uh, a couple of the schools and the special education budget. Um, it, you know, very informative, and so it'll, I look forward to meeting as the tri-boards. And I guess that's about it that we haven't already discussed tonight.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so I really don't have a lot of new news. Um, I was also at the Z B A meeting on traffic. I thought that our peer reviewer did a really good job. I, I hope that, you know, like, after the meeting, I kind of had some questions and I'm debating on like whether to send my questions through to Z B A or to, um, ask those questions. Because I, I was, I was struck by how few questions the Z B A asked, so. And so, you know, I have some additional questions, so I might, I might, I might send some, some stuff to Z B A.
Yeah, and you know, even that night of the hearing, um, you know, I, I feel like, do I stand up here or do I filter it through? Because I don't want to, you know, make any enemies out, eh, here, but, um, you know, I do.
I would say if you're sitting in a meeting like that and you have questions that are not getting answered, go ahead and stand up and ask them, because other people may have those same questions. And, right? And you're just a little more involved and that's okay, same for you. I mean, if you, if you're sitting there and you have questions that are not, have not been answered by either that, the, the developer or the peer review, I would say go ahead and stand up and ask.
You know, Yolanda, I know this is hard to believe, but I, sometimes I have a little edge. And so I, I, I just.
Wait, you?
Want to stay away from that.
But, but I think, again, if you have questions or comments, I mean, we are voting taxpaying residents, so.
Yeah, we're not speaking for the board.
You're not speaking for the board, you're speaking for yourself.
They know well and know that you're on the board, right?
And, and sometimes it's good to say, you know, I'm, I'm on the Select Board, but I'm not speaking as the Select Board.
I know, I know, I just think it's a fine line to walk.
Could I make a suggestion?
Sure, go ahead.
You know, one of the things that you could do, Claudia, is, you know, send them into the Z B A, but ask them to ask the applicant that question, like explicitly ask the Z B A to ask them that question.
Yeah.
So, just a thought.
Well, I kind of, you know, thought that.
Thought you did do that.
Yeah, and I, and I thought that they would do that, right?
Right, right.
Okay.
In any case.
Nothing else, Brandy?
Um, and the only other thing was the, the Department Budget Meeting that, um, that Makita and Claudia and I were at.
Wait, don't you have a senior that just celebrated something?
Senior that celebrated something.
Didn't he just finish track or something?
Oh, yeah, he finished his. No, 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 I was like.
He could be on the Council on Aging.
We're, we're, because I was like, we haven't celebrated anything yet, because he hasn't made a decision where he's going yet. Um, yeah, this, so, so the track team, um, finished, uh, they had, they had, um, D four states this last weekend. And my son finished at T V L's, but, um, it's been a great season. They had over a hundred kids participating in indoor track this season.
Over a hundred kids?
Yep.
That's wonderful.
And I just, I just, you know, want to give a plug to, to, um, just sort of the culture that has been created there and just the, how they've been able to, um, help develop these kids from freshmen to seniors. And they, it's, it's such a great program because they, it's so inclusive. They don't cut students, they, everyone participates, everyone cheers each other on. And so to me, it's been a very positive experience to be a part of it. And so.
Who are the coaches?
Uh, Sharon Ames is the, the, the head coach. Emily Riley and, um, uh, John Brenniger are the distance coaches, Ethan.
Okay, that's okay, I didn't mean, yeah, you mean that.
But the coaches are, the, the coaches are, are, are really great. And they've given, you know, there's so few actual meets, but they've gotten the kids to participate in invitationals other ways, um, all season long. So it's been, it's been a very positive experience.
Lots of times, you know, this, a sport like track, it doesn't get all the publicity and, and that i, is so important, um, because it, it is all about the camaraderie and the culture. And it's really just a, you know, I'm grateful for we have coaches like that.
Winter sports have wound down now at the high school. I saw someone I'm friends with, and, you know, someone I'm friends with, and through her Facebook posts, the wrestling team has finished, and I guess some of their stu, some of their athletes did very well at their last meet. So congratulations to all the winter sports athletes, and, uh, it's always fun to then see what they do in the spring.
Yep, spring, spring sports start up, um, I think towards the end of March. And, uh, God willing, some of the snow and ice are gone.
We got time, we got time.
So anyway, but, but that's, you know, yeah, and I have a graduating senior this year. So, um, we have been very focused on what is next in my household, so. And I will not say anymore about that.
Yeah, okay.
That's it for me.
Okay, couple, couple of quick things. I was also at the Z B A Traffic Study Report, uh, Traffic Study Hearing, so that was good to see. I was also at the Open Space and Rec Forum. Um, they had two forums, one on Wednesday and one on Saturday. It was the same thing, but they just did it at different times to try and get different people. And it's also available via Zoom. Their next meetings are going to be March 26th and March 29th. And Becca and Sam and Sophia, some of our staff are working with the Open Space and Rec Committee to be working on the plan, and that's moving forward. Uh, let's see, Metro West Regional Collaborative Meeting is next Thursday on the twenty-seventh, it's a virtual meeting. We have our tri-me, tri-board meeting on March first, uh, that will be here at Town Hall, so again, that's Select Board, School Committee and, um, Finance Committee. Uh, Anything Goes at the Ashland High School, I believe is the weekend of March first, I think. There's some signs around town, if you like musicals. What's interesting is I'm looking at that, and they did that back in twenty-eleven as well, and I know that because my oldest was in it, in her junior year, so it's fun to see that come back. A couple other things, we've received a couple emails about the NIP discussion, I found it interesting that that's what the local pages picked up on at our last meeting, was the NIP discussion. Um, we've received people who are like, no, you don't need to ban NIPS, we've had other people say, yes, please ban NIPS, so I have responded to people as we've received those emails. Uh, we also received an email about our budget process. I'm going to be responding back to that person, um, just to let them know that, you know, it's part of the process. And I haven't had the opportunity to speak with Lisa yet about, right now, what happens is if we get an email as the full board, I as chair have been the one responding, that's been historically how we've done it. Um, Claudia had asked, can we make it so that everyone can get copied on it? I just have to check with Lisa because it could be an open meeting law violation if I respond back to the person and copy everybody. So I will, I'm gonna follow up with that and, and let you know at our next meeting.
That would be nice to be able to.
Yep.
See you.
You know, the other thing is we can discuss how we want to handle emails that come in, if it's something, if it's not just the chair, and not for tonight, but, you know, think about it, if it's not the chair, some committees do it where it's the clerk that responds to emails, if we can't respond to all. Other committees do it where depending on what the subject is, someone says, you know what, I really want to respond to this, or I know, you know, something like that, if we want to look at that, so we can, once I get a ruling back from Lisa, we can further discuss that, how we want to handle that moving forward. And with that, our next meeting is Wednesday, well, we have the tri-board meeting on Saturday, March first, and then our meeting after that is Wednesday, March fifth. Anything else to add, Michael or Jen?
No.
Anything else to add? Anyone on the board?
No.
Yeah, if I can get a motion to adjourn. And a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That wraps up this meeting for the Select Board for the Town of Ashland on February nineteenth. Thank you for being with us, thank you for watching. If you ever have any questions, please feel free to reach out to any of us on the board or all of us, selectboard@ashlandmass.com. Thanks for being here and good night, we'll see you in March.